Before we get started, I want to make sure we have two people to remember in the room of silence. First, our on-call colleague, Councilor Connelly lost his mother. Connelly died. She was 102, but we want to show our respect to Councilor Connelly and embarrass him. He did not ask us to do this, but I'm going to give him some time. Also, we lost Joseph Levitt. He was only 38. He was a non-resident, but many of you will know Pat Levitt's mother. She's been a middle school teacher in Weeder's town probably for over 30 years. And so we agree with their family. So, turn them all to the side. Thank you. Do you want me to pledge my allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call for the meeting beginning at 7:30 on December 13th. Councilor Lane?
Here.
Councilor McCauley?
Here.
Councilor Shan?
Here.
Councilor Tontar?
Here.
Councilor Vogel?
Present.
Councilor Wallace?
Here.
Councilor Z?
Here.
Councilor Connelly?
Present.
Councilor Devlin?
Present.
Councilor Khan?
Present.
And Councilor Igraman?
Here.
Eleven present here more than four. And I believe our late file was full. Our late file has been withdrawn by the petition. Thank you. We have a resolution. So, we can read the resolution. We have some special guests tonight. Perpetual resolution, I believe, the mayor has connotations to give. Resolution reads as follows. Whereas the Yankee homecoming waiter waitress race, which was held August 2nd, 2021 on Liberty Street, with Paul Rose, manager of Brooklyn Ash, winning the event. And whereas unfortunately, the same manager received the winning trophy only to enter into a difficult condition on the street. Whereas off-duty firefighter Chris Richard and police officer Eric Ambitaktis immediately attended to the manager by performing the necessary resuscitation. And whereas both the Newport Police and Fire Departments responded to a man-down call, arrived at the scene, performed the insertion necessary, started rescue breathing, utilizing the medical bag, found a pulse and started compressions. And whereas the Cataldo ambulance arrived, applied the monitor, determined shock advisable, delivered the same, and CPR was maintained, including certain meds. And whereas firefighter Mike Kent then drove the ambulance to the NJX Hospital with firefighter Terry Larry assisting with patient care. And whereas Cataldo ambulance crews that responded to the calls included Skip Mullin, Kevin Moore, Benedetto Ferrandi, and Tom Alden. And whereas the manager, Paul Rose, after a period of hospitalization and recuperation, has fully recovered. Now therefore, City of Newport would like to acknowledge and congratulate the extremely competent, selfless, and timely actions of all involved and offer its sincere best wishes to Paul Rose for continued good health, given under my hand and seal this day, December, year 2021. Dona D. Holliday, Mayor, Jared Igraman, Council President. Thank you. That is a connotation.
So, this, I think the resolution says it perfectly. This was an opportunity that it's important that we acknowledge the work of our first responders. And they did an amazing job coming together as a team between fire, police, and Cataldo. And so I'm pleased that we have the opportunity tonight to honor these people in terms of what they have done. So what I will do is start with Cataldo and read the first citation and the names of those who had passed them out. And then we will move over to police and fire at this point. So Dennis Cataldo, if you would come up here please, who is president, owner, CEO, and ownership of multiple other apps at this point of Cataldo and Rent a Ambulance. So, City of Newport presents a certification of combination is hereby awarded to Cataldo Ambulance. It is my honor as mayor of the City of Newport to extend to you the city's gratitude and appreciation for performance instrumental in saving a person's life. The city is privileged to have Cataldo Ambulance providing quality frontline EMS services every day as a member of the Newport Court community, given under my hand and seal this 13th day of December in 2021. Donna D. Holliday, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Just like to say on behalf of our entire company, I've been encouraged to work with you during your administration. And I also want to highlight the cooperative efforts that we have had and continue to have with both the marshal and his department and the chief in his department worked well as a team. And I think this is an exemplary representation of that teamwork.
Thank you, Dennis. I appreciate that. So, we stay here and the members of these people here. Paramedic, Fernando Fernandes. Okay, so you will present it to them. They all say the same thing. EMT, Thomas Alden. You shake my hand. There. And then Skip Mullin. And paramedic Kevin Moore. All right, so this is our team from Cataldo tonight. So, thank you very much. And I'm going to look at the camera. Unfortunately, I'll have to keep my masks on just to make people know this room.
We look free.
Thank you so much. Next, I would like to recognize Chris Richard. In all of these things, my honor as mayor of the City of Newport to extend to you the city's gratitude and appreciation for performance above and beyond the call of duty. Having been instrumental in saving a person's life, the city is privileged to have you as a member of the Newport Fire Department, given under my hand and seal this 12th day of December, section 13th, in the year 2021. Chris couldn't make it. Please give him our thanks and the citation, please. And next, from the Police Department, Detective Michael. Terry Larry and all his families here too. We kind of are salt. Okay, we can give his citation to him with our thanks. And finally, Officer Eric Andrew Case. Wow. And then just before you leave, I'm going to ask Paul Rose. If he would be fine. This gentleman. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I applaud you. You don't have to say a few words. You don't have to. I definitely should love to say thank you to this gentleman. And I definitely, I'm not usually someone that shows up on March, obviously. Everyone knows me. I'm going to talk a lot. But to be putting that much effort into someone that you don't know and making sure that they think they know when they're handling with their gun uses as we can put out there, it means a lot.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you all. Mr. Chairman.
So, the first speaker we have. If anyone gets two minutes, if you can just call, please come up. Stand on the table on the floor so that the camera can figure what. It's your first name and your address to record. And you can speak on any topic on our judges tonight. The first name is Brenda Raffelt.
It's Brenda Raffet, but thank you. That's okay. So, our community attempted over 30 years ago to find a permanent home for our youth. We did this with First Night Newport. Excuse me? I'll give it to you in writing after. I don't want it on TV. Newport, at the time, through First Night Newport Race Funds for several years for proposed teen center at that time, but couldn't get the support of the local leadership to move forward. Fast forward, short while ago, this city council had an opportunity to finally purchase a site for a permanent home for our youth services. At the time, there were concerns raised, some very valid, some interesting, but they've now been addressed and suddenly new concerns seem to have been raised. And they are related to the wetlands issue. We have a very professional and competent COMCOM that will enforce the wetlands protection afterwards applicable. City Council is not an enforcement body of the wetlands act. We brought it to the attention. The COMCOM will address it. It also seems like we have a lot of political posturing about this vote. Who's going to get credit if we build this now or we purchase it now? The bottom line is whether it's the current mayor or the next mayor, they're both going to get credit for this because they've both been involved. And it's just nonsense to worry about who's going to get credit. Anyhow, it's nonsense being played out at the expense of our kids. As a very intelligent man, in my personal opinion, said many years ago, Representative Tip O'Neill, "There is no limit to the amount of good that can be done so long as you're not concerned about who's going to get credit." We're not as important as we think. I have sat in that city council president's chair and I've sat in all of your chairs as a city councillor for many years. No one remembers me. Nobody's going to remember you. What they are going to remember is what you did. And if you don't believe me, I challenge you to come up with 10 names from 15 years ago at the city council and you won't be able to do it. And that's okay. We're not that important as individuals. We're important collectively as a body. I, you know, there's a road that connects the two shopping centers. It makes it easier for people to shop. It was an economic development issue and it stopped people from having a well-done story app and get back into another shopping center. That was my ability to do that. You don't know that I did it, but you enjoy it every day. It was for the collective good of Newport. Public comment came about because I pushed it through. It was one of the things I did. Again, it doesn't matter that I did it, but what's important is that we have the opportunity for people to come and speak. And let me talk to you about when I put public comment in for a vote for the council, people dug their heels in and didn't want to do it because they didn't want people to come forward. I haven't got to two minutes. So, I'm asking you, don't dig your heels in. Use public comment for what it is. Listen to what people are talking about and think before you dig your heels into your vote tonight. Voting to purchase a low-street site without restrictions is our opportunity to demonstrate the value we see in our youth and the value that we place on their needs. So, I respectfully request each of you to think about the greater good that you can do for our community.
Okay. Back to our rules. Again, no one's going to remember the rules. Sign up on the door. However, because we've been under COVID regulations, we allow people to call in. So, I have another person who wishes to speak. Add your name, please. Just give your address. Rule required. The next speaker is Jane Snow. Please give your name and your address in two minutes.
Thank you. Jane Snow, Nine Clapham Street. There are several proposals on the floor this evening that you folks have spent hours and hours working on. And I so appreciate all the efforts. I do realize that there's still some things in terms of how the building would be used if you purchased 57 Low Street and how it would be financed. So, I would appreciate it if it were held over to January. Short-term rentals have been something that has caused a lot of issues for many residents. And Council McCauley has worked endlessly to try to come up with a happy medium and a plan with steps, procedures, et cetera. And unfortunately, before he could get every I dotted and T crossed, time has run out. So, I would implore all of the councillors to give him an opportunity to continue to address this in January because it's an important ordinance to all of us. And I would be remiss if I didn't say you've had an eventful two-year term. I can't thank you enough for all the things that you did, especially during the pandemic administration staff. Everybody went above and beyond. Makes me very proud to live in this city. I wish you all the happiest of holidays and a happy, healthy, prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Neil Wilson.
Thank you. Neil Wilson, 24 Finnegan Way. I'm here just to speak in favor of the 57 Low Street. I live in Finnegan Way, which you may realize is a near-Turkey Road, which I think of as West Newport sometimes. And I had three daughters that are now 22 years old that are triplets who were very busy users of youth services at the time when it was in the Kelly School. And I see the benefit to having something that is located in the center, somewhat in the center of town that addresses the distance that some of us are from downtown for the parents that have, that live in that area. It also just seems like it makes so much sense based on the nearness of it to the schools and the facilities that the schools are there. I'm trying to be familiar with the details of it. I'm just here to speak in support of it and to speak in support of it as something that might be done immediately as to waiting, potentially worrying about the price of it going up was one of the issues that I had heard. And as a thank you to Mayor Holliday for all of her hard work in this process as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, online, the first speaker is Juliette Walker.
Good evening, Council President and City Councillors and Mayor Holliday. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. And I first want to just acknowledge those of you who will not be continuing beyond this term. And thank you for your service to our city. Juliette Walker, Eagle Street. I'm speaking tonight again in support of Order 301. And unlike the previous two speakers, I'm not asking you to approve this for use of youth services tonight. I'm simply asking you to devote in favor of acquiring this land and leave the decision about the future use of this property up to a future capital and public process. As you know, I've spoken in favor of this acquisition in the past. I'm going to just highlight a few key points tonight. This is sound public policy. Acquiring land is the best way to ensure we, as a public body, can determine what happens here in the future. And the future of this property should be, as I said, determined through a public process, separate from the decision about acquisition. The two other proposals in front of you tonight regarding this property preclude public input into the future use. And I think that is an important consideration for all of you to keep in mind. Second, punting this decision to the next council and the new mayor is not the way to go either. Whether you like it or not, this decision will be this council's legacy. You have debated it exhaustively now two times. And it is right for you to see it through this body tonight. How can you reasonably expect a new council and mayor to resolve this within two weeks of being elected? It's not fair, nor is it responsible. I ask you to please carry this through to its conclusion tonight. Leave the future use up to the future capital planning processes and allow further good public discussion to weigh in on that at that time. But don't miss this chance to acquire a piece of property that is in the heart of our community at a cost that is very reasonable. Future use could even include leaving it vacant. It is still a reasonable decision to acquire it right now. So again, please vote in support of Order 301 tonight. Come together as a body.
Thank you. Please write it up. Next is Jared Hubbard. Mr. Hubbard?
Yes, this is Jared Hubbard from 49 Boardman Street. First of all, I just want to thank the mayor and all the council members for your service, for the innumerable meetings on the late night and the hours and many reports you've all read. And that's just on 57 Low Street, let alone all of the other work that you do. And I did want to speak on 57 Low Street and encourage the council. You know, this council is well-versed in everything with that property now. We've had numerous reports. And I think the council should go ahead and vote for it. The council, it seems, you know, there is support to buy it. There's discussion about what it should be used for. I think the council should go ahead and buy it. You know, if this gets punted into January, you're basically, you're going to have to educate four new councillors on this in a very tight timeframe with emergency meetings to try and get everything done. I think the council should go ahead and buy it now and then come up with a process for NYS and a process for determining the best course to use Low Street. But I would go ahead and encourage the council to vote for it tonight and to purchase the property. Thank you.
Can we get an address for 29 Boardman? Next is Jenny Donahue. Jenny Donahue, go ahead.
Yes, hello. Good evening. Jenny Donahue, 18 Cherry Street. Former Chair of the Newport Commission on Disabilities. Just a couple of things. I'll be as quick as I can. First, just thank you all to the city councillors who are not going to be returning in January. You've all been on a long time and I appreciate all the work you've done. Thank you all so much. I do want to let you all know that I did conduct my last Disability Commission meeting as chairperson, as acting chairperson for the first time in 10 years. The commission will be headed up by co-chair members, interim co-chair members Kristen Farrell and Lisa Rowan. And you will hear from them in the future. Tonight before you, you have two approvals for new Disability Commission members, Omni Remo and Debbie Campbell. We are very pleased with them joining the commission. We're excited to have them on board and we appreciate your unanimous vote of approval and, you know, vote of confidence for them to get involved civically. This is first time, I believe, for both of them in doing something like this. So, let's encourage them and thank you. And then I just want to quickly throw my two cents in about 57 Low Street. I think that we should just purchase it and get that done with now. I do think that there's enough uses for it that there'll be no shortage of quick decisions to be made in the new year and the new term on who to put in there right away. I think parks would be happy to take the space immediately and youth services would be happy to revamp the space to their needs and get support for that. So, I would ask that you do actually support 301 and just get this piece done. You've all put so much into it. And while I appreciate having the opportunity to work on it in the next term, I think you all have put in your due diligence and would appreciate, you know, that you all get to put your name on this very important piece and purchase the land before we lose the opportunity. And I just thank you all again.
Thank you. Next is Kathleen Shaw.
Yes, this is Kathleen Shaw. I'm at 9 Upland Road. I too would like to voice my support for the Order 301 for the unrestricted purchase of 57 Low Street. I agree there are many potential uses for it. My understanding is if it is not approved by January 31st, that there's a potential that it would be reappraised and that might be a much larger sum or at least a larger sum than it's currently being asked. I'm particularly interested in its use for Newport Youth Services. Our family's been a longtime user of Newport Youth Services. And I currently have involvement doing some consulting and run the grandparents raising grandparents group. It would be advantageous to be able to move a permanent home along as soon as possible. There's been tremendous amount of disruption and uncertainty. And right now, it just seems in youth and families' best interests to continue this process. So, and I thank you all for the work you've done during your terms and wish you all the best going forward. And, you know, my best to all of you. Thank you.
There are three speakers left. Ed Cameron, nine Preston, which rank her next is.
Hi, thank you, Council President. Ed Cameron, 5 Milk Street, at-large city councillor-elect. Calling in for two points. First of all, I want to thank the four councillors who'll be stepping down. Councilor Connelly, thank you for your years of service, all your dedication with the high school and library many years ago. My kids still say you have the best Halloween candy in Newport. Councilor Devlin, appreciate your humor. You're willing to listen and compromise your occasional rugby jokes that really did not make any sense to anybody but a few of us. Councilor Igraman, this city has benefited tremendously and would be very different without all of the work that you've put in over the last eight years from smart growth to historic preservation. You've been a good friend and really it made such a huge difference and very appreciative of everything that you've done. Councilor Tontar, from smart growth to unpopular things like the garage. Thank you for being there for the citizens of Newport. And also want to thank Mayor Holliday, a former city councillor as her term ends. 57 Low Street, I am in favor and ask that you vote on it this term. And please do not wait as time is of the essence. I support the clean purchase. There's an old saying that you measure twice and you cut once. And you did that. You've measured twice. So, I think it's time to cut. There's another old saying, don't look a gift horse in the mouth. Well, you looked at that gift horse in the mouth and it turned out it was a pretty good deal. So, I think it's time to take the vote. This is the purchase. The use can be decided in the next term, but we should be moving forward on this quickly. The state is not always the most reliable partner. So, if they're saying it needs to be done by the end of January, I'd rather not do emergency meetings in January to relitigate the whole thing. Please do it now. Maybe nobody will remember us in 15 years, but I think it's the right thing to do and appreciate your consideration of my views. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Connie Preston.
Yes, hi. Connie Preston.
Yes, hi. Connie Preston, eighteen Atwood Street, also a councillor at-large elect. First, let me say that I very much look forward to serving the residents of the city in the next council and working with the mayor-elect Riordan in his administration. I'd also like to thank Mayor Holliday as well as councillors Connell, Tontar, Devlin and Igerman for their service to the city. I am speaking tonight to urge this council to pass ordinance three oh one to purchase the property at fifty-seven Low Street without stipulations tonight. There is no reason to place restrictions on the property at this time, which will only limit the new administration's ability to best determine the use of the property. I understand that some councillors may be hesitant to purchase the property without further information on the purpose and more importantly, the scope of the cost of the intended use of the property. However, this administration and the new administration do not have the ability to pull together a plan with substantive, key word being substantive, information prior to the deadline of the sale imposed by the state. This council and Mayor Holliday and her administration have done the work and they alone deserve the win on the purchase of this property. The facts are clear. The city needs the property at fifty-seven Low Street for several different possible uses. The state is willing to sell the property to the city for a very attractive price and we would be foolish to miss the opportunity. There's no reason to delay this important vote. Please approve ordinance three oh one so that the purchase can be secured and the new administration can determine how it is best utilized by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Wrenker.
Good evening. Rich Winoker, sixty Longfellow Drive. I'm gonna add one more old saying on top of Ed's old sayings, and that is do not put off till tomorrow what you can do today. Approve Order three oh one. It makes sense. The city needs it. And approve it without stipulation, and that's what Order three oh one is. You guys have done all the work. Finish the job. Get it done tonight. Thank you.
I had said that the last speaker is gonna be Rich Wrenker, however, I had Peter Twitchell. Carter, so.
Good evening. Thank you for giving the chance to speak. My name is Peter Twitchell from twenty Dalton Street. Newburyport. I have two children who benefited from the Newburyport Youth Services. And I strongly encourage you to vote tonight to secure this property. I'm also co-chair of the Special Education Parents Advisory Council. And I'm in touch with four hundred families who have children in this town facing all kinds of challenges. I think if we lost heat in City Hall and Senior Action Center, this situation would have been solved much faster. For a lot of residents, parents that cannot understand why this has taken so long to get a property that really is a no-brainer when you look at its location and what it has to offer this city for the price. I really encourage you to move tonight. Don't put this off. It really is difficult for parents who don't stay up with city business to understand how this could possibly take so long, knowing this property has been sitting there. And so I encourage you to do the right thing. This is your legacy. Don't put it off. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes. Sorry. I have to turn it off somewhere. Party has features to overtime. Go to Mayor's comments.
Good evening, councillors. And I did not prepare a formal final update for you tonight. I have just a couple of things I'd like to talk to you about. One is you've heard numerous, numerous public comment on the purchase of Low Street over many, many months in subcommittee meetings and council meetings. I think the only person that we heard from was Katie Eyes, who said we shouldn't buy the property because of the landfill. Landfill's closed and that there's a whole development that has been built on Colby Farm Lane. So that's not a legitimate reason in terms of the landfill at all. When you had ninety-nine point nine percent of the people in this community who have spoken over and over and over again in favor of purchasing this property. Your job as councillors and mine as mayor, at least for a few more weeks, is to represent what the constituents and the residents of our city want. It is really clear to me that there is tremendous support for purchasing fifty-seven Low Street. It has been a three-year process that I initiated with the National Guard and worked really hard. I acknowledged your concerns initially regarding the PCBs. We had a horrific cleanup over at the behind-the-wastewater treatment plant on the rail trail. We had a much lesser degree in the garage site. But your concerns were legitimate in terms of was this gonna cost us an additional hundreds of thousands of dollars to clean up this site if we don't know what we're dealing with? So we're going back to the National Guard and circumventing DCAM was able to convince the National Guard to let us do the boarding. Priders came in, reputable company. I think you all can agree with that. Their report identifies that we're in, it's clean. We're in a good shape. I know that councillors had concerns about drainage, but what projects don't have drainage issues that we have to deal with down the road when you're starting to, you know, develop them? I mean, it's nothing that can't be addressed. It will be incredibly difficult for a new council. Think about how challenged some of you were when you came in and you had to do the buying property to build a garage into mobile facility. It was really difficult and you had many, many months. We don't have many, many months. DCAM has been very, very clear to me that we must close by the end of January. So what is it, one meeting in January? That's an awful lot to ask of a new council. Some have been paying more attention than others. But there, we need this property. There is no other property in Newburyport. You know that. You know, we have a Realtor on the council, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for two point one acres is a great deal. Please purchase this property tonight and let the next council and administration work together with our community and figure out its best and the best use. Please. I also wanted to just talk for a few minutes about ARPA funds. Things didn't happen in terms of our ADHOC committee that I would have liked to have seen happen in terms of us doing more work. But there was just so much on your plates, on my plate, and the state just passed the funding. Well, they passed it on Governor Baker's desk. I don't know if he signed it yet today in terms of the funding, which is a mix of ARPA and surplus funding so that they didn't have to really follow the strict guidelines of ARPA fundings. There's a lot of earmarks in that. We don't have anything in there for earmarks this time around, but that will be the job of the next council and administration to push that forward. But it's really important. There is Build Back Better infrastructure money coming. I implore you to recognize the fact that we have an opportunity here to do major upgrades to our water supply and protection. I really believe this is in our best interest of the city to use what we have left outside of the million we allocated for Phillips Drive to do match, use that as a match in terms of being able to upgrade and put the granulated activated filters so we can deal with PIPA's at the water plant and we can do more work in terms of potentially using the pipe from Indian Hill and some redundancy across the bridge with Amesbury. Really important for us to do that. And finally, the last thing I wanted to just address tonight is that, you know, we've worked very, very, very hard with our firefighters to had a stalled process during the pandemic, came back together again and came up with, I think, is the best contract for the fire department. I wasn't available to be at budgeting finance, but I appreciate the, what I understand is a positive vote that was taken that night. And just to address, I know an issue of are we trying to sneak back in longevity? Never, 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 never. Longevity's been long gone. We don't need to give incentive for people to stay working in the city anymore. Those days are done. But it's just trying to make that contract a little more equitable with all the other contracts in the city that have steps. All I have to do is look at the teachers' contract with all the columns and the end steps that they have at Ask Me and all her contracts. So I would encourage your positive vote on that. And finally, thank you. It's hard to believe that it's been twelve years and this is my last city council meeting. I have enjoyed working with all of you and I thank you for your service, Joe and Jared, Barry, Charlie. Thank you so much for all the work that you've done on the council and to continue to move our city forward. I feel that we've, you know, had our our conflicts and our debate, but that's healthy, that kind of tension between executive and the legislative. But I think in general, we've made a lot of progress in our city and I wish the next council knows that you are staying the best of luck going forward as you continue to do great work for our city. So thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Stay right there. So my call of the fifty dollar limit of gifts. We actually do. One is one is for me and one's from the council. And I went to Jabberwocky and I got the show token of our appreciation. Again, I don't want to sit here the twelve years you have, but just for our time. And I didn't want to get you something that looked like work, you know, like a government book, so I got you something fun. So I got you some photographs of the cast of Hamilton. So I really enjoyed that with Joe and a biography of John Gourde, who is an actor and a musician. So I just wanted to do this to you.
How we can see the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening consists of the approvals of minutes for November twenty-ninth. There's one communication, application fifty-eight, girl scout cookie sale Saturday. One one twenty-two, one two twenty-two, twenty-two and two five twenty-two. Public safety. An appointment, which is David Zink, Sixth Laurel Road, the Electoral Inspector until one one two thousand twenty-three. There are the following items to be removed from their committees. Economic Development ADHOC, ordinance ninety-eight, Market Landing ADHOC, Order two ninety-six. Budget Finance Orders three hundred, three hundred and one, three oh nine, Transfers one thirteen and one fourteen and Order three eleven. Education, three Communications, two seventy-three, three twenty-nine and three fifty-eight. License and Permits, Ordinance forty-seven, Applications fifty-six and fifty-seven. Neighborhood and City Services, Communication two ninety-nine, Ordinance one oh two and the full hearing in Chandel Drive. Planning and Development, Ordinance forty-six, Orders three oh five, three oh six, three oh seven and three oh eight. Public Safety, Order three oh two, Application fifty-five, Communication three eighty and Order three ten. That is the consent agenda this evening.
Are there any changes, Councillor Z? Communication application fifty-eight, please. Oh, we got that.
It is out. So girl scout cookie.
Anything else, Councillors? Motion, motion. All is in favor, say aye. Regular agenda.
Next thing in the regular agenda would be, you have the Communication fifty-eight, just pulled.
Motion, motion to approve. Well, sorry, motion for emergency preamble, the emergency being the first event in January first two thousand twenty-two. Council not be damned for. I'll make a, if I may, on to this, we're motion to approve as well. Want to do it together?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll take, take your chance. I'll read with this.
I'm ready to say this time.
Go ahead. What is it about? The settlement market street. All right, everyone, now we're going on to the second, the emergency girl scout.
And approval.
Okay, and it's a setup for analysis, the roll call in last bell suite.
Okay. All in one. Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Shannon?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar? Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
And Councillor Igerman?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
There is a, there is one. First reading importance, aren't it?
Second reading.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. David Zink came in. There is.
He's in the consent.
Oh, he's in the consent, okay.
But however, pardon, pardon, sorry. Doesn't matter that it expired on twenty-three, so.
I'll tell you what, eventually I'm waiting to continue this next year. Yes.
Yeah, it's an order. Yes, move that. Wait a minute, whatever number. Application two ninety-five would be proposed to next year.
Second. If you're a little close, if you're say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, so thank you. The single on was pulled, right? So now we're on the casters. They're not.
Right.
Second reading events.
Appointment two eighty-nine, Omni Remo, eleventh Lockon Lane, Commission on Disabilities until twelve fifteen two thousand twenty-four. Appointment two ninety, L O M Adams is a special police officer. Appointment two ninety-one, Paul Milken, thirty-seven Milk Street to the tree here until twelve fifteen two thousand twenty-four. Appointment two ninety-two, Debbie Campbell, ten Chestnut Street, Commission on Disabilities until twelve fifteen two thousand twenty-four. Appointment two ninety-four, Miguel Gahani, eighteen Strong Street, Human Rights Commission until twelve thirty two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to collect. Second. Question. Hold on.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Shannon?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Igerman?
Thank you. No orders?
No orders.
Do you have a second reading for ordinances?
We could, ordinance eighty-four, ordinance ninety-four, ordinance ninety-two and ordinance ninety-six.
Well, so let's take it in a line.
Okay, so the first one is ordinance eighty-four, which is street sidewalks and other public places. So-called alterations in maintenance. Again, the second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Question. Call call. That would be.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Shannon? Councillor Tontar?
No.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
No.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
No.
Councillor Igerman?
Yes.
Three noes, motion passes.
If you didn't get four.
Okay, so I had Tontar, Conn, Khan, Shannon. Ordinance ninety-four, which is the municipal fee schedule. This is the second reading.
Motion approved on second reading.
Second.
Session.
Second reading, Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Shannon?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
And Councillor Igerman?
Yes.
Next is ordinance ninety-two, which is the zoning amendment encouraging outdoor and recreational activities. This is a second reading. Next is, uh, ordinance ninety two, which is the zoning amendment encouraging outdoor and recreational activities, this is a second reading.
Motion, motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Session, roll call.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Shannon?
Yes.
Council Tontar?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Z?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Devlin?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
And Council I.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety six, the clarification of parking.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
I'm gonna recuse myself, Mr. President. Council Z, using himself, a, a. Roll call.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Shannon?
Yes.
Council Tontar?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Z is recused for the record, Council Con?
Yes.
Council Devlin?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council I.
Yes.
Council Z, turn. Maybe I. So, committee, ultimately, if we add off the economic development, um. We make a motion to carry over the next legislative session, ordinance ninety eight, private purpose legislation. Uh, on this one, uh.
Don't motions have to come from the floor rather than the chair? I'll move both.
So. Second. Okay. So, as I reported before, we don't have the fee. The fee, uh, settled, so next session. Any other questions or comments?
In ordinance ninety eight, to the next session, Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Shannon?
Yes.
Council Tontar?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Z?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Devlin? Council Con?
Yes.
Council I.
Those can be voiceless, right?
They can.
Can be.
Yeah, that's just a problem. Um, on the other, we, uh, park and land park, uh. I'm supposed to just give a full report on the motion. So, committee report is, we did have an agreement on, uh, order two ninety six. Additional funding for market landing, uh, park restroom facility. We voted, um, three to one, but represented to the council without. Sorry, we send it back to the council without recognition. Uh, there was one dissenting vote of both the chief councilor and the. Issue here is the amount of funding and so on. The definition of staff that, uh, meant to adjust estimated costs slightly, so, uh, be aware of that. Any court, the court, uh, plan recognition or detail if you wish, but that's the committee report. Both of you, too. We're second, second. Go ahead, Council. Speaker, anyone else speak on the motion?
You know, I, I, I just sent the committee, but, um, you know, we're out of time, basically, and the amount, so Sasaki was unable to attend our meeting, which was kind of the source of the challenge, we want to talk to them more, understand the theme. So, um, I think the logical thing is to just send it over and then next year. I also think, as I mentioned in committee, there are two other design issues that I think a way to resolve, one is the orientation of the building, where it should be broadside, the merrimash, the particular and the materials. And I think we go over to ourselves to resolve that before we go to Sasaki and waste time and money, so we didn't go to that debate either. So those are the reasons I didn't use a little more time in the oven.
Director Porter, you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can you tell us about the, uh, the cost?
Yeah, uh, so we, we went over the cost of the design for the project. Um, the original, uh, estimate is a hundred and seventy thousand for the design work. Uh, we have to make sure that this building is energy efficient, so, uh, in order to do the analysis and make sure that we're, um, looking at solar properly as an option. Uh, we're adding, uh, a little bit of, uh, to the cost of the design, that's where the additional cost comes from since the committee meeting. Um, that's to comply with the, the new ordinance, uh, the council's adopted, so we want to make sure that's also incorporated in the contract per, per legislation. Um, the, uh, in terms of the cost, and then, uh, Council Z's comment, you know, the, the ad hoc committee is going to be involved and, and obviously a number of other constituents will be weighing in, uh, next year, so, again, we defer to the council, but, um. It, it, I don't think it would hurt to approve all the funds for the, the design of the project, because at the end of the day, um, there is going to be further input on both the orientation of the building and its design, that was, that was pretty obvious. Um, at the ad hoc meetings we had, uh, of late, that there, uh, was a desire to, to tweak the design of that building, so. Um, I think that there's, there's time certainly to address those concerns, but, um, what we're trying to do avoid here is a mismatch between the park having, uh, plenty of design work done and ready for construction, whereas the building might be behind. Um, again, we're trying to le- leverage any outside funding we can, and with the potential for, uh, federal money to be trickling down, we'd like to be able to have shovel-ready plans, so. Um, the a hundred and seventy is, is broken down between Sasaki and the subconsultants, but, um, but that's the cost of the, the design plus the, uh, energy efficiency analysis.
Uh, yeah, I think my, my question would just answer that, I did move to approve, and that was seconded, so that's what for us, and, and I do think we should approve it tonight, uh, so that we can move this project, uh, forward.
Yeah, thank you, Council President, this is more just informational, um, these ad hocks, do they have to get reformed next term? So, okay, so if we continue, then we need to kind of reform the ad hoc, we allocate people, and then put this data back in there, is that correct? Is that?
Well, no, well, no, I mean, well, first of all, Council Con, very correct, a motion on the floor is. Is, to me, you don't want to, but I don't want to prove to the vote, just something clear, whatever, so. Correct, it's, it's. What, what happens is, the president, under the charter, can form all these ad hoc committees. But it's, it's out of the committee, it's before the council right now. So, if, uh, if it were to be continued to the next term, it would be before the eleven councilors. And then you can decide, you're the senator, if there is an ad hoc committee, you put a sentence to that, and you can figure it out. But you don't, just because, uh, it used to be that ad hoc doesn't mean it has to be.
May I then just continue, also, what was the final vote, um, I know for that, there's, is it five members of the council that are on?
Well, what, I'm sorry, do you mean on the ad hoc?
On the ad hoc that are council members, and what was the vote to, um, for?
It was three oh one, I, uh, I think Council Shannon is absent, so it was Council Con, uh, Council McCauley, I wanted to bring it out without recommendation. Council Z dissented, there was no other motion voted on?
No.
I just wanted to bring it out with that.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I broke the flags on here, Council.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I made it to the chair, uh, was asked, uh, any further questions?
Yeah.
Uh, Andy, uh, can you comment on, should this, should this go over the new year, should this be delayed? Um, what, how does that affect you and, and the process?
Uh, well, I would say, and again, I defer to the council and the, uh, mayor-elect coming in, as any committees you'd like to establish, certainly I will, uh, regardless of that, maintain, uh, uh, incorporate all the feedback from the stakeholders we've got, uh, involved to date. Um, but the, the building design itself does have some impact on, uh, the other particulars in that area of the park design. So, uh, again, my concern would be holding Sasaki up on the ability to wrap up tho- those details as well. Uh, we know that there's a need to come back with a twenty-five percent schematic design for the building, uh, that, uh, addresses some of the concerns that were raised with their initial sketch. Um, and so there is, is going to be some modification based on that, and in order to make sure the park design is complete, like I said, uh, we do need to finish the building design, because the orientation of the building, uh, as was mentioned, might have some effect on that, the exact alignment of one of the, the ways. Uh, a few feet one way or left or right, uh, it could be helpful to make sure that the park is, again, shovel-ready, uh, as we try to leverage outside funds for construction.
Thank you very much, so, if I hear you correctly, um, if we go ahead with the, uh, funding and the, uh, process continues. It still comes back to us more or less before those final decisions on the direction of the building and so on and so forth, is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct, I would be bringing back to the mayor-elect and the council, if, if no committee were established by the council, I, I would feel it imperative to go back to the mayor-elect, uh, coming in and the council, uh, for confirmation on those particular details. Since those were not addressed in the council's adoption of the Sasaki plan, um, that it was a remaining detail to be addressed.
Uh, on that, I would stand, uh, in favor of fending, uh, presently, thank you.
Thank you, Council Con.
Uh, thank you, President, to the members, I, I just want to confirm what Council Z stated previously, and that was, that we were largely in agreement, uh, on sending this committee, uh, to the council. Uh, the, the points that we were, were kind of stuck on are really points that we're not in a position to judge early on, we can express individual preferences, such as the surface treatments. This can be brick, this can be clattered, it could be shakes, uh, you know, that, that's a, a design consideration, we didn't have, um, visuals to guide us in that, in that decision, so. It's all, felt premature to, to, to express a particular opinion there. The, uh, likewise, the orientation of the building, which is critical, I think we actually were in, in general agreement, all of us there, that the orientation should be perpendicular to, uh, to, to water, to Merrimash Street there. And, um, uh, otherwise, I think that the only other sticking point was, as the councillor correctly stated, uh, the cost, it does seem like a, 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 a pretty expensive design process. On the other hand, um, it's an important building in a very visible location, we want to get it right. So, uh, at this point, I'm, I'm wanting to move forward on that, and, uh, move it to, to the next council for additional work, once the planning office, working with Sasaki is able to give the, the council at that time. Uh, a design, uh, in, in, in the early phases, that's going to have to be tweaked, uh, by the next council. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McCauley.
Yep, uh, thank you, Council President, uh, uh, the, the, uh. The park design itself is modular, and we funded, uh, all the other modules except for this, uh, this particular, uh, item. Uh, yes, it was more expensive, uh, visually than all the other sections, uh, uh, it, it was out of that. So, we did, uh, want to hold this separately. The, uh, the funding, leftover funding from the NRA funded the other modules of the park, this would have to be funded, uh, we say, from, uh, parking receipts going forward. Uh, it was unfortunate Sasaki could not make that, because at the previous meeting, we had given them a tremendous amount of testimony and input and feedback. Uh, as to all of the particulars that we've been talking about, we hadn't heard that, as to whether they incorporated them or not. Um, I, I mentioned the modular part of the park, because, um, the majority of the park is coming back to us at seventy percent design. I think we've already taken that, um, uh, leap of faith, uh, based upon what we've seen. This particular item is coming back at twenty-five percent, because we felt we needed to do some checks and balances, particular to the importance of the location, site, citing, and all of that of this particular building. At this point, I would vote for this to move forward, simply because the next meeting, we need to have a twenty-five percent answer, uh, to ourselves for the next council, for the next ad hoc, however, we approached that. But I think that at this point, um, we, we need that twenty-five percent feedback as to where we're going, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I come back around, I didn't realize when the debate, so, um, I just wanted to explain my dissenting, but I didn't want to send it out without recommendation, I, I didn't, I mean. That, that is my challenge with this, and one thing I've learned from my time is that you cannot use design process to, to somehow figure out public policy, right? So the, the problem is, when you give the designer money, you, you can't put them in the middle of a public policy debate, and the materials of the building, the orientation of the building are really our choice, Sasaki doesn't care if we turn the building ninety degrees. You just need to know so that we're not just spending money, and then coming back and saying, actually, we changed our mind. I also just, uh, respectfully want to correct one thing, there, there are visuals that are available, I shared them with residents who are concerned about this, you can go and see Sasaki's hotels and see a, a rendering of the building, it, it is in brick, it is parallel to Merrimash Street. And that's actually what prompted some of the concerns from residents, so my dissent was that I, I just. We're not that far off, but Sasaki couldn't come, so we couldn't get really an answer on the price. Director Porter does not suggest any different price, so if we're going to vote on this, the least we can do is at least amend it, or correct it on this, which is not what it shows anywhere. And second is, again, I just, before we let Sasaki lose, we need to have that discussion, I hoped we'd have that discussion at the meeting, but it is December, so we kind of frankly just ran out of time, it wasn't for a lack of interest or willingness to do so. And the other thing I've learned is the waterfront, is the waterfront, and it's perennially, um, controversial, and, and the time that it's spent on the ad hoc, and, and the previous ad hoc, by the way, has, has paid dividends in terms of making sure everybody's on the same page. So, if this gets passed, and it's not the end of the world, but I, I do think there's a better path forward here, but at least in many amount of different.
Let me call on Director Porter, I stand up, Director Porter, a couple things, so first. That was what the corrected amount would be now, uh, and also the twenty-five percent issue that was raised by Council McCauley, what was that?
Yes, thank you, uh. So, uh, in terms of, uh, the dollar amount, um, I could break it down for you, but it's a hundred and seventy thousand for the design work. Um, there is an additional cost, as I said, to comply with the D H G protocol, um, so that is added in as well, those two, uh, numbers combined are a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Um, in order to maintain the ten percent contingency that had been recommended, uh, both by the, uh, department, Sasaki, and by the ad hoc committee. Uh, that would adjust the number and bring it up to, uh, a total of two hundred and six thousand and eight hundred dollars.
Okay, and then, twenty-five percent, uh, so that, that comes back to the council, maybe twenty-five percent design, yeah, right?
Right, that's correct, and I would actually note as well to some of the councillors' points, and if it's any help to you, um, we can't provide to you, uh, Sasaki can't provide you, the Office of Planning and Development won't be able to provide you the renderings that you need to be able to make that, uh, important decision for, um, the design of the building, uh, and any, uh, particulars about the orientation, which we clearly heard about at the last ad hoc meeting. Uh, the perpendicular concern, so, um, there, there's no way for Sasaki to present those revised renderings to, for the twenty-five percent without the appropriation. Um, with respect to the remaining appropriation for the remaining, uh, design contract to bring it to a hundred percent and shovel-ready. In addition to try to make sure that we have this project ready for construction, uh, as funding becomes available, and we don't want to miss anything that might be trickling down, um, as we accumulate, uh, other sources of funding actively right now. Um, the other concern I would have is, um. With not having the, the twenty-five percent, or not having the, uh, the hundred percent design funds is just, it, we all know the age of the structures that are there, uh, and, and, you know, they've always been, we've always referred to them as temporary structures. Um, but I'm doubtful that anybody would walk away from doing the remaining design necessary to get that, uh, that project, as it's been approved at twenty-five percent by the council, uh, to shovel-ready plan, so we can construct something to replace what's there.
Thank you, uh, so, uh, is there a motion to amend?
Yeah, I would move to amend, um, and at the end of the, um. Or it says, the city appropriated some hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-five, I would delete that number and, uh, replace it with two hundred six thousand and eight hundred dollars.
So. Head, head just want to call a question to Director Porter? Yeah, so, Director Porter, did you say it's one seventy, it's Sasaki, so, and then one eighty-eight totally, and G H G is eighteen thousand?
Uh, uh, there's actually two things involved with that, it's broken down further from there, but, uh, one element of that is the P V solar array design. The other portion is the G H G reporting that shows, uh, how the building is generating its efficiency, uh, and energy usage, and how that's being offset, we're, we're intending here with Sasaki to try to design a net zero building. Um, we're going to push that as far as we can, but the G H G protocol, as the council knows from the, the recent order, um, requires the, that new buildings that are designed, um, provide input to the council, so you know how much closer we are getting as a city to net zero.
Thank you. Okay, uh, how about a vote on your next question? Council Lane?
Uh, so, just the design, just two hundred thousand dollars, what's the building going to cost? Any ideas?
I believe there's one point two in the, uh, in the estimate, we did get an estimate of that.
Rebound.
Yeah. And it is, uh, one point two. Director Porter, I remember that right, the construction cost in our budget was estimated at one point two?
Yeah, that's correct, there are a couple hundred thousand dollars extra of soft costs, we call, uh, you know, on top of the hard cost for construction, um, you know, uh, insurance and things like that that go with it. Um, but in essence, yes, it, it, and again. But in essence, yes, and again, and that's partly because it's a very prominent building. This isn't equivalent, I would say, to the bathrooms that we have on Plum Island in the parking lot. This building has to look, you know, decent in the downtown, and it is going to have more bathroom stalls than the the current facility does. So again, I I think it's, you know, again, if we're, we certainly were able to actually bring the garage in less than what the estimated budget was, and I'm hopeful we're able to do that here. But as the councillor noted, the construction, the hard construction cost was about one point two. And the with the hard costs and soft costs, about one point six.
Thank you. Any other questions to consult? We're still on the amendments. All those in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
If you're three?
Two.
No, three. I hear Ellen, Lane, and Z. Right? Is that right?
Yes.
So eight, two, three. Okay, and then remind me, we have even the man here too, the downtown baby parking avenue, does that take it to the majority versus the bare majority?
Councillor, that is a receipt their fund, so it is a simple majority.
Thank you. Okay, so any other subsidiary motions? Both of them.
Motion approved as amended. Order two ninety six, councillor Lane.
No.
Councillor McCauley, yes. Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor Tanta.
Yes.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Zee, no. Councillor Connell, yes. Councillor Devlin.
No.
Councillor Con.
Yes.
Councillor Agnew.
Yes.
Eight, three, motion passes.
Here's Z, budget finance.
Yes, Mr. President, motion to invoke rule seven each of the city council rules to collectively send orders number three hundred, three oh one, and three oh nine to the next session. Second. Mr. President, I'll just offer the committee report, and then I'll yield and conduct it later. The committee was referred this on November eighth. We met twice, once was on December second. That meeting, we've had a very lengthy agenda, primarily was a report from Pardere, which was mentioned. The two representatives from Pardere appeared before the committee and didn't give the whole, I should say, and provided a report. That was put into a slide deck. That slide deck is available on the city's website if anybody is interested. But essentially, it was half and half. Half of it covered the existing conditions or ground school. And the other half roughly covered the conditions at those street. Councillors were able to ask questions as were actually department heads. Then we had apartment heads communicate about what the potential use for the property might be. And we did hear from youth services, we did hear from the Department of Public Services, we did hear from the Parks Department, and we did hear from the School Department as well. Then we adjourned that night, and we met again on Tuesday. And that was December seventh. At that time, we had other items on our agenda, but we spent time without any inviteee, so to say, deliberating a little bit. We did go back and forth. I think probably everybody knows kind of what the general conversation was. But we did also hear from the the mayor-elect that he would like to have this moved to the next session. Councillors still both in favor of sending it to the next session as well as not sending it to the next session and speaking in favor of certain ones of the orders. In the end, the same motion that I just made was made in committee, and it was it was sent out to you with that recommendation by vote two to one, with councillor Con dissenting. And that is the conclusion of the the report. Thank you.
I have a point of order. The motion was to consider collectively, is that a change in the rule? Do we vote on that? Because I would much prefer we vote on these.
So you can you can make a motion to divide the question.
So I have a move that we divide the question, consider these. Three of those.
Is there a second?
Okay. The rule dividing question, I think, is the second. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I missed that. Actually, I don't think you're. Well, they have, then never mind.
Yeah.
Number twenty seven.
I also like to make a point of order, though. The motion to divide, the president can interrupt my. So it's not our.
That's you also.
Yes. It's a down motion. It's a down motion.
Well, in a me, with all due respect, you can't interrupt the ongoing discussion, but it does say amended.
I think you can't, sorry, you can't. You can't interrupt your presentation, but I think it's just like a motion to amend or something.
Yeah, that's that's my reason to.
So separated into three questions. Again, to refer, so this is a motion is to refer. The subsidiary motion is to separate it into three, one for each, or?
What on the question to divide? Councillor Lane, no. Councillor McCauley.
No.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor Tanta.
Yes.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
No.
Councillor Zee, no. Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Devlin, no. Councillor Con.
Yes.
Councillor Agnew.
No.
Motion fails.
We're back to the main motion, which is to refer it to the next session. Hands for people who want to speak on the matter.
Well, I'm going to speak on the matter. No surprise, I know. May I do the chair? So despite a lot of input from a lot of people that did share the room or through the Zoom, we're going to go ahead and we're going to move this on. And we're going to end up debating it in the next year. And my biggest insert is that this body very, very often speaks the process, speaks to, but things coming at us quickly and having no time to understand them. And here we are, dropping this on the four new city councillors who will essentially have one meeting. We get inaugurated on the third, seven days later, we have a meeting, and we must decide because we have to close this thing by the thirty first of January. It makes absolutely no sense. We have been through this for over a year or coming on a year. Every single objection that was brought forward has been answered, every single one of them. We've tied it up somehow. We've tied it up, this purchase of this property, we have tied it up to the brand school. We've added a couple hundred thousand dollars saying we can heat that building up. We can fix it and heat it up for a couple hundred thousand dollars. None of it makes any sense. And I understand that we need to come to a conclusion as to how this building is going to be used to the to the Chair of the Budget and Finance. Good job. You brought forward four departments who all said, yes, I can use it. Three of them deferred to, or two of them anyway, deferred over to, you know, the Youth Services. This is our best shot to get Youth Services somewhere. If we'd done this last February, Youth Services would be somewhere. Nonetheless, I'll go back to the process. And and we talk about the the whole idea of divisiveness. The the mayor-elect has said publicly all along through his 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 campaign that he was in favor of us buying this building, and he was in favor of Youth Services. I spoke to him one on one. He said, I want to buy that building.
Please see the motion.
I'm sorry. Well, I I can't. I'm doing the best I can. Nonetheless, back to the process. We're going to send this over to a new council. I have a quote here. I'd like a quote. Divisiveness occurs when councillors feel they lack information, lack the opportunity or time to thoroughly consider a proposal, or are overwhelmed or overburdened. I think we can work together collaboratively to avoid these conditions in the first place. I am committed to that. Well, you don't recognize this? That was the words of a city councillor here in this room right now. I just don't understand it. I really don't understand it. I'm all in favor of working with the administration to figure out how we use this building. I don't know why we don't just buy it.
Yeah, thank you, councillor president. I guess what I think that I'm just asking our group here that we didn't talk about budget finance, we're going to postpone this. In terms of timeline and knowing that we have the the email that was sent to councillors, I think on December fourth, identified a process in terms of January thirty first, and then D C A M, the gentleman from D C A M was saying that an appraisal would need to be done. And I guess there's certain questions I have about that that really kind of concerns me. I I know we don't have the, I mean, there's the votes to move it forward, and we don't have the votes to sort of, you know, to approve this tonight. So I I know that. And I hear I hear everyone that they do not want to take this up with this body. And, you know, I I won't, you know, beat around the bush. I I'm disappointed we can't move on it. I I thought we had three orders and that we were going to be able to compromise and come up with an order instead of delaying it to the next group. Because that's how I saw these three orders, as they all had pieces in it to try to get a conversation, and we never got there. And now we're moving into this next next group. And now for additional people will have to hear about all of these different interests or competing opportunities. So it just makes me feel like if a timeline is being suggested to to postpone, it's one thing if we know the direction and we just want a little bit more time. But to me, I'm a little concerned about how much time are we going to really have? So I'm a little worried about that. I won't lie. It seems like a very compressed timeframe in January, and this is where it's unknown. Whereas I really understood it before, if we kind of know everything we know about the property, we met with the department, and we know the needs. The simple thing for the mayor-elect would be to get the property and then let the mayor-elect and the administration move forward. It just seemed like a logical direction. So I know that's not going to be the desire of this group here, and I understand that. I guess my my only point that I just want to let folks know is that we are writing on on this kind of bought time because one of the rules right after, actually, one of the rules from I was reviewing the rules to understand, you know, moving things forward, is rule two I that talks about anything we buy, purchase, or even if we sell something, you have to have an appraisal within twelve months. And we're not at that point if we decide to buy. So we need to just be conscious of these other factors as we move forward and and yeah, so I'll I'll just say my piece. I think that's on the motion to move forward. I will not be approving that. I would rather be approved and discussed tonight.
I'd like to make a point of probably to clarify my message. If we choose not to move this forward, is it permissible to entertain a motion on individual elements of these items? Independent one of them. I I believe the answer to that is yes, but I'd like to move in the chair. If this motion fails, I think councillor is going to make another motion. So you can make motions to approve one or all orders. Then then we have more subsidiary orders. You can you can divide and that. You can continue to make certain. Thank you, that's our decision. Okay.
I'm going to give you a a little bit of a different read on this. I noticed that the the sponsors of three hundred and three oh nine have never had to stand in a competitive election in which, as an incumbent, they have had to defend their actions in this body. And so I'm going to suggest to you, is this motion, as the public sees it, is a mess? Right? How do they read whether you favor Youth Services locating there or not favor it based on this mess of emotions going forward? Right? We have heard a number of people tonight, right, strong supporters of Youth Services, ask us to move the past three oh one. Right? How do I vote on your motion? Right? I favor that, right? I don't favor three oh one, and I don't, excuse me, three hundred, I don't favor three oh nines. Right? But believe me, I'm speaking from experience. You run out there and someone can say, you didn't support Youth Services, did you vote? Right? And when reality is you did support, right? This is a mess. It doesn't provide transparency, and I'm not voting for it. And I'm not voting for it because I support Youth Services.
So I will say it is unfortunate that we were going to push this forward and put this on for new councillors in January, where we do have a business timeline. It does seem unfortunate, given how much time this council did put into this last November, last December, this January and February. It is unfortunate. We're the ones that have all the information, and trying to do all of this in January is tough. And it's it's unfortunate when you go down the droughts. I still am supporting this.
Thank you. Other passengers? Thank you. I delivered the clear report, but I appreciate an opportunity to speak. So when we discussed this back in February earlier this year, and it took a vote, we were on Zoom actually. I spoke at that time, and I said, you know, there's no win in what we had, what we ended up with in February, which is a vote that didn't work out. And we sort of all went back, and at that time, the next action of the state was the formation of the selection committee by N Y S. I made an effort to participate in that and sent it with some thoughts and things like that. Not all heated, but it is what it is. And then all of a sudden, found out that back in the fall, we'd be right, you know, sort of right back into the seven most, or everybody's favorite topic, at least this time around, and this, there seems to be one every session. I I I think that this is a tough decision. I do. I want to know knowledge and facts. It's not a clear cut one here because you do have different factors on both sides of the argument, and both of them are actually quite rational. Here's how I come down on this. So first of all, I continue to be amazed at the sort of disinterest in talking about the sort of public policy aspect of the point that some want to maybe receive and file two out of the three, when those two are the ones that really discuss what is the what is part of the heart of this issue. When we had lengthy conversations back in February, we identified three issues. We identified the condition of the property, the use, potential use of the property and associated costs, and the weapons. That's a matter of public record. When I scribe my letter to the council in an effort to make this process as productive as possible, given the short amount of time for that, I believe that those are the features that I held suspected would come up. And in fact, you found that this is the same for issues that we have. I understand some councillors don't weigh those the same. Some don't see any value in the latter two. It's just the condition of the property. Again, I don't necessarily think that's an unreasonable position to take. The land is available, there's potential uses. But when I weigh all of these things out, here's how I think about it. Number one is, I do do a key weight to the concept that the mayor-elect has asked us to put this to the new session in the good faith that we actually can address those questions, which we really haven't. And that's my second complaint, is that but for the fact that it's the end of the session, neither is a member nor is the Chair of Budget what I ever have voted to send this out. It's simply not ready. And how do I know it's not ready? Because actually, if we put any one of these three to a vote, I'm willing to gamble that none of them have these. And that is possibly the worst outcome that could happen tonight is we don't put this off for the next session. We all beat our chests and vote on three of these separately together. It doesn't matter. None of them achieve it. And one message that we sent to D C A M at that point. So that's how I know the work hasn't been done. And I'm also the Chair of the committee, and we only had enough time for two of these. So the mayor-elect has asked us for more time. The state has granted us more time. We have this sensation in our rules to do so. We clearly haven't finished the work. If we finish the work, this wouldn't be so hard, but it is. So I'll be voting this to put it over to the new session, but I don't want anybody to think, just as I didn't think back in February, that this is like some So I'll be voting this to put it over to a new session, but I don't want anybody to think, just as I didn't think back in February that this is like some huge win or something, that we're walking away with a victory here in any way, shape or form. For the city, it's just this is the most prudent step forward because again, if you have to put down money right now. You'd be a fool to vote on success here if you take these out separately and then try and move on. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um. So I'm trying to figure out how to approach this because I will not be on council next year. And I don't want to reiterate, this is. About thirty pages of notes on the hearings and committee meetings that we had dating back to. Uh over a year ago. Um and in that, you know. I I would agree. If I'm reading those notes now, some of them are dated in December of two thousand. Track twenty and November two thousand twenty. About the same issues now and in the same, I I sat and I wrote, I wrote, this was council so and so's comments. This was council for so and so's comments. And we we aren't in the same spot. So. And I don't want to get too deep in the weeds in that. For me, the first and key point, and it should be to anybody who's interested in this issue with divisiveness. Is that the mayor-elect has asked us not to do this. This is a courtesy that's afforded to incoming mayors and afforded to incoming city counselors. I I I can't question, you know, the sitting counselors, but. I I'm only assuming that the councils that are coming in who all sounded very certain and sure that we should buy this. Uh I can only, I can only hope that there is, their not, their main concern is the deadline and that overrides their desire. To start the new year with the new mayor in a in a collaborative way, or at least give him the benefit of the doubt in a collaborative way. Um, oh, let me say something on deadline, by the way, and and uh, you know. All of our emails are public, by the way, so. You know, it's feel I do need to, that's a public record. And I feel I do have to mention that. It was suggested that going to Representative Kelkhorst's office to find out the position of D cam. The only reason I think called D cam is I had to call him. I I've been doing this since the first time fifty seven low street came up. To give you a little history, the first thing I started with, which is alluded to the mayor today, was the garage. And in the first three weeks, we were told that we had to vote on a design bond. And two of us were like, look, I joined the city council and ran because. I I watched for a year and didn't see the questions that I would have been asking about these projects. We were told at that time if we did not do this in the next, I I think it was thirty days, I couldn't find my notes on it, but it was right there. That we were going to lose our five million dollar uh bond to vote this. I forgot that file and it's about this thick. A year and a half later is when we did the bond uh order. The design bond took nine months. And that was nine months of meetings and meetings with neighbors that we. Councillor Zee and myself required in order and the 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 debate was. Whether we're going to have a seven and a half story, one council mentioned, I would make it ten stories. A seven and a half uh story garage, five and a half story garage, a two and a half story garage. Thank, that's all I can say is thank God I stuck my guns through massive amounts of pressure, which is pressure that's being reasserted in the same way now. But massive amounts of pressure, more pressure than any input we got for today or the emails that we've gotten on this issue. And thank God I stuck my guns because I think we could all agree if you're being rational and having a fear together that a five and a half story or seven and a half story. Or ten and a half story garage would have bankrupted the city. But so I. I've been faced with those deadlines. I actually, I called the M B R T A back then. I brought them in and asked them the question correctly. So I I did since the beginning of this, I contacted Representative Kelkhorst's office. And Representative Kelkhorst today called D cam. D cam called him back. D cam said I can go on the record with this. So maybe this will lay the new counselors fear. But the two-year timeframe on the appraisal is discretionary in D cam. They, if this doesn't close by January thirty first. And we could close within a couple of weeks or or after that, it was a menu, within a couple of months that we were making. Good faith progress on this. That D cam would be would use our two-year appraisal. And if you look closely, the reason I asked is if you look closely at the emails we received, there was no. Declarative statement. There was no, well, section twenty five point six seven nine says that we have, we have to do this after two years. So and and this was not a just off the cuff answer. Representative Kelkhorst's offices was told that they were going to speak to the team, much like the email here to colleagues. And uh they came back and said, we could, I could say this more on the record, that that the um. You know, it's almost like we're acting in good faith. D cam will give us time because they want to sell us this property. My notes as well on all the meetings. That in in the uh two thousand nineteen ones say in several places, we have to buy this property by December thirty first of two thousand and twenty. That's a year later and and here we are. So I hope the fact that that that's what's underlying my, you know, frankly. I have utmost confidence in the, I know all four people who are coming in. And their intelligence and their interest and their their work ethic is unparalleled. And I have all the confidence world. Uh one uh councillor like uh uh. Uh like uh uh Preston was on all the Zoom calls. She she was in in the attendant and the attendees. She commented on Facebook. She commented in emails. Uh Representative, I mean, I'm sorry, councillor-elect uh Cameron is is a veteran of the city council. And and as we heard him tonight, they all want to vote for property. So I don't think we lose much by giving deference to the mayor-elect. And and not questioning why he's asking for that. Uh finally. I I do want to acknowledge the hard work that Mayor Holliday and all, I said, gone through. We're just, it's six to five. And and I will say in these notes. The the people who are on the six on the voting no side that prevail. I I disagree with a lot of the comments weren't addressed. Some of them, but we also weren't, I I've never spoken to the mayor. She's never, I voted no. I did not hear from her from the no vote to today. Not once, not once did she call me up and say, what can you do to get this done? I I hope, I hope that next year you all come in with a open mind. And that's the type of communication you all have. And so for that reasons, I'm going to support moving this over to the next session. Thank you. So I too also support moving this over. This has all been thrust upon us over the last two weeks. I resolve. In terms of what use is going to be. So now it's going from, it's going to be parks, it's going to be E P S. Now all of a sudden it's you should put N Y S in this position. I have no problem with this purchase at all. And yes, the mayor plan of it was real there on the bill. What the thing that gets me is that this is two point seven acres of what? Completely usable land? It's pointing one. So when you threaten me with a new appraisal, having sold the property next door. The only thing we've dealt with there with a lot more likely usable land and what it's actually worth, you'd be surprised. So I'm not afraid of an appraisal coming back. I actually think it does us a benefit. Personally, I would offer a lower amount on this. I would opt to keep him unless you want. Regardless. I'm going to move it to the next session as. Counselor Live said, that's what the mayor-elect has asked. I have full faith in him. In making the best decision of what goes in this land. I'm not going to be forced into. Here's this and oh yeah, by the way, it's for N Y S now. I was on that committee. So is my time all wasted now because that's like human duty? But all of a sudden, judging from the public opinion, that's where N Y S goes. You vote against it, you're voting against N Y S. I have a hard time with that. That being said, I'm going to vote to carry this over to the next session.
Public policy issue is whether or not to buy the property, not the use. Next minute, if we buy the property, we decide tonight to buy the property, the mayor-elect next year and the new council will get to determine its use. So the only public policy question before us right now is whether or not we should buy the property. I take it as axiomatic that more choice is better than less. The new mayor will come in, if he has low street as a possibility and pushing and and the rest of the areas. More choice is better than less. It's axiomatic, right? So again, I am not voting to send this forward, right? Uh I, you know, I, we have seen that there is another school that's interested in purchasing this at market rates. Right? And if a charter school buys it, guess who's paying for it? We are. Right? I support buying this tonight and the use to be determined later.
So roll call.
It's my my quick two cents. Uh I will be going to send it to the next. Um council. I I do see both sides. I think that in itself is a policy issue, whether you want to commission up the term. Or want to go on the recommendation of the mayor-elect. But my fear is if you don't send it over now. We are not going to agree. And I agree with Councillor Zee on that, that. The worst thing that could happen tonight is that we end up with a no vote. And I think if we push this to the next term. Get some fresh ideas. Um I realize it's it's a quick timeframe, but I think that was our best chance. Of getting this to pass and coming up with the best possible product that we can um. Getting as much information out in the public is not a bad thing. And and when we ask for that. We just don't think that as we don't support N Y S or we don't support. You know. Children or it, you know, that's not true. We, I think all of us want the best possible product. We have a disagreement on how to get there. But I want to play it safe tonight. Take this extra time that we have. And make sure we get it right and get it done in the next session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that what is most confusing to the public. And from what I hear from talking to people on a regularly daily basis. Is what exactly is it that we are shaving? What is it that we are trying to decide? And here, I think, more or less from all of you, we need to buy the property. We should buy the property. I want to buy the property. But what is confusing, and that's what three oh one does, is buys the property. What's confusing and what is what is jumbled is. Is that we're trying to buy the property and and decide what's happening with it at the same time. And we all agree that we need more vetting, more input. Allowing the new administration to work on that problem. Um youth services stood up in their meeting on uh. They were late last week saying. This is their their best opportunity to be somewhere quickly. Wasn't number one on the list, but it's their best opportunity to get there quickly. That's how it gets associated with N Y S. But again, we determined through the budget and financial meeting right here in this in this room. That there's at least four entities in the city that can make use of it and possibly more. That is a decision that needs to be pushed off. And that's a decision that needs to be fully vetted with the new administration to buy this building. We have all the information that we need. And I think we all said we want to buy it, but for some reason that I don't really quite understand and has never really been said. We're not going to do it tonight.
Roll call on the motion to area over three orders to the next session.
Okay. Councillor Lang.
Yes.
Councillor McCauley.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor Tomta.
No.
Councillor Vogel.
No.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Z.
Yes.
Councillor Con.
No.
Councillor Devlin.
Yes.
Councillor Con.
Yeah.
Councillor Igram.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve transfer one thirteen, which is a transfer of two hundred thirteen thousand nine sixty three forty seven. To a variety of different uh accounts related to the firefighters' contract. Mr. President, at the same meeting on December seventh, the previous budget finance method discussed this. Let me try and convince the council as possible. As you know, uh the firefighters, the last time they had a three-year contract expired back in F Y two thousand nineteen. Uh then COVID kind of came along and the uh city did do a one-year contract, temporary contract. Remember that made its way through this council last year. And that leads us to today. So there's been quite some time since there has been a three-year contract in place. And once the negotiating team, which uh which constitutes is complicated by the mayor, the finance director, the H R director. Uh the new president Kevin Parcigen and and also a couple of other firefighters from the negotiating team who are here, Jeff Cutter. And uh firefighter Stamboli uh basically went back and forth on the negotiation. And the first thing that was decided is it probably doesn't make sense to just do a three-year contract that tends to be amount of time to last. So. Trying to give you the high level here, this is essentially a four-year deal, a one-year look back, three-year forward. And the idea would be to to, you know, to try and make up that time in retro just as we did last year and then also create an actual three-year contract that hopefully some durability. So now next, I'll give you some of the finances. There are a number of changes to the contract. The total financial impact of the contract in its aggregate in total across those four years is approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Break that down for you a little bit, two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars could be the amount that would go backwards into the retro portion of it, about sixty-six and a half thousand dollars. And then a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars forward. And then in F Y twenty-three, the budget impact is estimated to be a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars and then in F Y twenty-four, a hundred and four thousand dollars. So that's kind of the high level of the timeline and the amounts. And so what you're seeing here in terms of the transfer is that two hundred and fourteen K, the retro and the and the current fiscal year. So those other impacts is what you would expect to see. As future budgets make their way through this council. So how are those numbers arrived at? First of all, there are some wage increases. Uh F Y twenty-one and twenty-two are both two percent increases. F Y twenty-three is three percent. And F Y twenty-four is three and a half percent. So it's a two, two, three, three and a half contract. Again, the first two is retro looking back. Um in addition to that, there are a couple of other important financials that play a role in those amounts. One is the mayor mentioned um the inclusion of the new staff. So in the previous contract, a fifteen-year step was added, meaning that a firefighter. Who's with the department for fifteen years uh got an increase of that anniversary. A new seven-year step was, a seven-year step was added to firefighters that meet that seven-year anniversary will see a three percent. Increase at that time. The other, the last big financial impact is an E M T stipend. And these days pretty much being an E M T is more or less anonymous for the fire, being firefighter in work, although not contractually able to be obligated. We learned that in committee. You cannot obligate a firefighter or a civil service to be an E M T, but essentially you can encourage that through compensation. So there is an E M T stipend that existed. And the change would be that it will increase from three and a half percent to five percent. And that gets phased in fifty basis points uh each year for a period of three years. So that's the financial impact of the of the contract. Let me give you the other major changes and then I'll start to wrap up. Probably the two biggest changes in this contract from an operational standpoint is the dispatchers are moving from the absentee union. Where they currently reside into the local eight twenty-seven, which is the firefighters' union. So now the eight twenty-seven will encompass the firefighters and the dispatchers. And that leads to the second major concept, which is the addition of the concept of white duty. Uh with the idea being that if there's a firefighter that's injured, that they were able to uh to swap into a role, uh white duty and act as a dispatcher with the idea being that it was cut down. In theory, hopefully, the amount of overtime that's spent by using this swap concept. Um we did question quite a few things in committee. We did have a good discussion. Uh let me just pause one second there. The other last change I wanted to highlight is that there is a slight cutback and sick time buyback. At the end of a career, at time of retirement, from a hundred and twenty days to a hundred and ten days. We did have considerable discussion on this, but it's a substantial. We did have considerable discussion on this, and it's a substantial contract, open to end length and financially. So we wanted to question a lot of the steps for question. That's where the longevity discussion came from the mayor. And you heard from the mayor that that's not the long-term intent, so there are three steps to try and just bring it more in line with what you see in other contracts across the city. We also questioned the ability of a firefighter to act as a dispatcher. And the answer was that many firefighters have essentially come up through the dispatch, um, you know, as sort of a farm team, if you will. So you become a dispatcher, then you become a firefighter, perhaps you become a firefighter. So going back from being a firefighter, the dispatcher, unfortunately find yourself injured is not an impossibility. It's not under training and all of that kind of stuff. We discussed the E M T uh concept at length and the importance of that, and the the department is essentially, I don't know if I'd say a hundred percent E M Ts, but very close to that. And so that's positive. Uh, we also discussed, uh, potentially, could we have used ARPA uh to pay for the retroactive pay, because there is potential in our premium pay. Our client is directly stated that he didn't feel that this would qualify as um premium pay. So that's why the the funding source for all of this is the contingency budget, which is what you remember we did, a supplemental budget. Um, so really, the 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 last piece is the, is one that I'm not able to get an objective answer to, but obviously, uh, the question is, how much will this white duty offset? Some of these other injuries. And that directly indicated to us that it's very difficult to estimate, but the hope is that it will cut down on that overtime. So I don't have a number to share with the committee. After continued discussion, the the committee deliberated and uh sends it to you in a motion to approve or recommend approval. Um, by a vote of three to zero. As I mentioned, you had the union president and other members of the negotiating team in our committee meeting here as well. Uh, should council staff have questions, I I can also try. Uh, thank you.
Sure. Counselor, Counselor, I have to come.
Yeah, committee may ask the chair, uh, or the representative of the union, was there any discussion of inflation pilot? Two percent is very generous, and your thought, in my opinion, with the currently running to six percent annual rate of inflation, there's a lot of debate. Um, so was there any discussion about, about an inflation action?
There be. I'll just answer very briefly. That question did not come at the committee, so I would defer it. Obviously, I haven't been in a part of the committee.
My name is Kevin Parsken, president, locally twenty-seven. Uh, that that subject did not come up.
Thank you, President. And I don't know if I should just to the um committee chair or to the negotiator?
Chair.
Um, uh, two questions. One, as I scanned through this, there's something that I missed that I'd like to question right now. Uh, but but first, as a as a preface to that, I think it's wise to go essentially kind of support your contract, if you know, for all intents and purposes. If you've gotten out of faith and keep on doing this, passing a a contract that's been negotiated because when passed, they turn to the contract and have to reach back. At least this gives us the opportunity to actually have three years ahead. I I I credit the the negotiators for having um tried to correct that, that's the kind of disparity that we we've experienced in the past. My question is this, uh, usually steps, as you go up, the the latter, well, fundamentally, um, are are separated by a percentage increase, sometimes two percent, sometimes two and a half, some other number. Uh, as I understand it, there is an additional step on top, which is for those folks who are offered that. Is the percentage between the previous step and that additional step the same as those that preceded or have I misproceived that somewhat?
So there there, in terms of steps for um performance or qualification, there are some in this contract for that purpose. For example, E M T is a stipend. If you hold the E M T certification, you get a stipend. If you are the EMS coordinator, you get a stipend. And there's a few things in there for W H E, such as a vehicle or a cell phone or things like that. So that's in one bucket. In the other bucket, there's just, they're very simple, anniversary, seven-year, you you hit the seven-year beyond, you get that. We're calling it a step, for lack of a better term. And um then fifteen-year, you get another increase of fifteen years. At this point in this contract, those are the only two steps that exist. I think in other contracts, steps were associated, not just with time, but potentially also with the lack of better term performance or education. That's not the case here. It's a certain, that's that's what prompted the longevity discussion in committee, is that that's how longevity historically had worked. And interestingly, you'll see in this contract, longevity, you know, expires for, unless you were hired before, from the nineteen ninety-six. So your question is about the percentages. Um, they're basically, I believe, a step in both cases is three percent. But it's set three percent, bump the seven years, another three percent bump at fifteen years. And by the way, because of all these stipends, there's actually in this contract an order in which the stipends, the additions have to be calculated. So it's base plus X percent. It says step one, step two, step three, because they essentially compound up one another.
Yes.
Part of the negotiation was, well, what's the order you would compute these in, and they and they did arrive at at a certain number of steps. So it's base plus E M T, then plus this, plus, and so I hope that helps.
That's three percent.
That's a three percent.
That is a three percent.
Sorry. Three percent.
Uh, Counselor Con, you also have?
Yes.
Other, other questions or or debate?
So roll call on approval of uh transfer one thirteen. Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
Council Tonta?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Z?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Devlin?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Igram?
Yes. Motion to approve transfer one fourteen, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars towards the sewer uh. Hey, Mr. President, very briefly, we met in committee on this, and we did have the the director of D P S with us. Uh, essentially, we're talking about the wastewater pervert plant. Uh, back in July, the the generator, which is there to serve in the event of power failure, keeps the plant up and running fail. Um, the decision was made at that time by staff, bringing in temporary emergency generator, which has been there since July. So we have not had a gap protection against uh power loss. In the interim, uh, they were investigating how to repair or resolve the issue out of buying a new generator or repairing existing one. Uh, after working with a vendor, we've got something to answer, we've determined that the generator can be repaired. And um by usually, really, the engine, you know, the generator is okay, so we're gonna get the old generator in or hook up to the new engine. And uh, this amount is brought to you to fund that, as you can see in the combination of the replacement of about a hundred and eighty-three thousand and a forty thousand cover the rentals, and the committee brings us to your recommendation to approve by a three to zeros.
Thank you. Other counselors? All as a favor, say aye.
Uh, last item, Mr. President, is order number three eleven, moral uh foundation gift acceptance. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to uh accept gratitude projects one, two, and three collectively. Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to do one, two, and three collectively at this moment. Uh, we, this is an annual gift from Moral Foundation. Um, it is, um, just as a by way of quick reminder, um, the morals, uh, it's a private organization, and they have a charter and a charge, and they essentially open up a a grant process, if you will, for applications. By uh, by happenstance, the decorum or protocol, it's usually the Parks Commission, Parks Department, they're putting in all the ready plans. Although my understanding is that private, you could do so as well. But just that historically, it is from the city acting client for those department and that commission. Project one and project two are probably projects you're familiar with. Garrison, uh, uh, birthplace marker, we actually dealt with this during CPA.
I was our counselor, but you're gonna say collectively, and I have to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right, so yes, that's actually just where I was gonna get to. I don't know how you want to handle it. Let me just rewind from number one. So basically, they said in the letter, if it's not needed, then it will go to private. Yes, we're moving on from from number one.
Don't you just change your motion to prefer two and three?
Okay, all right, two and three, so. Okay, um, Marlet restoration, again, probably just heard quite a bit about, and then there's, we we did ask for an update. Thankfully, not enough time has really elapsed since we had the third C P A approval for the Marlet now, but they are working on it. Atkins and Common Maintenance Building, the current door is not safe and not operable. Uh, the door that's opposed, here for ten thousand dollars, will will look, will look nicer and safer and hold on to maintenance building. So sorry, we didn't follow these two and three collectively, Mr. President. Motion for both, uh, three to zero.
So he, he seems to be okay with just.
Okay. And and let me just verify for the record, since you dumped in one, so that's gonna be absorbed in the sequel. Okay, because you don't need money, so it said money will go towards that. I just want to make sure.
I understand that, so it was at two thousand five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay, all right.
So roll call approved collectively, numbers two and three. Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
Council Tonta?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Z?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Devlin?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
And Council Igram?
Yes. Okay, Mr. President, next up is the motion to approve project number, or to uh accept the gratitude, my torch project number four has amended in committee. I can read you the amendment that was. Okay, the amendment was to accept a gift with gratitude, provided that the gifter understands that it supports lower Atkins and Ford rehabilitation for multi-ful, multi-use pending all other details, for example, pickleball, being worked out by recommendation from the Parks Commission and confirmatory vote in the city council. And I will be happy to apply that to you.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Right.
So this took up the longest time in this one. We had um some folks in favor of pickleball. We had about twenty folks with primary league councilor meeting. Uh, we also had the Parks Director and Parks Commission Chair, and we sparked off a conversation, as pickleball often does. And it seemed that there were some unresolved questions about how conflicts between different uses would be addressed, and there was some concern by the, by the primary league folks. So um being a gift, not wanting to sort of say no, thank you. Um, we thought that this would maybe be an elegant way to accept a gift and provide for the process to work it out. Um, with that, with that amendment, it was three to zero.
Counselor Wallace?
Um, thank you, Chair. I I will be supporting this amendment. Um, there were some notification and some miscommunication issues between primary league, some of the others. But I I give the Parks Commission, Parks Department credit. They're willing to come back to the table just as we had done a few weeks ago, um, to make sure that all the parties are in the room. So I believe the Parks Commission will be taking this up again in January, so I'm looking forward to working on that. Um, I I think pickleball is a, is a great sport. It's been, you know, it gets a lot of the seniors active, it's a social activity. Um, but I will be looking to um defer to the ward for residents to make sure they understand the impacts, that they're heard. So I think pickleball, maybe this is something we can pick up at the next session. We may want to look at it from a citywide perspective. I believe the Parks Commission already has, but I think that's something to discuss um next year on this, this session. Thank you.
The clarify is that, so it's only based if it goes towards the lower Atkins and primarily. Because I was under the impression that primarily was not owned by the city. And if we're gonna accept a gift for a pickleball, city pickleball court in the primarily, what happens when somebody gets hit in the head with a softball that gets hit up one of the parks? Who's the lab that's coming out? So the only, my, I guess, to break it down, my first question is, is it only based, you're only accepting this in terms of playing a primary league or can it be used in other places?
Uh, Chair, as easily as you can. Um, I'll do my best. So um, the the Moral Foundation has provided a gift for this purpose, so I don't think that we could just strike it out and move it. It does stipulate specifically lower Atkins and um, Pioneer League that doesn't own lower Atkins and it's still city property, the city owns it. And um, you know, that there there unfortunately is is not a formal agreement right here with Pioneer League, which is in the subject of much discussion and debate over the past several years. Um, so that is probably one of those details that does need to be worked out, although I think the primary focus of public comments around the conflict of use and parking and a number of kids who are going through there, and also actually larger lower Atkins and concerns over the master plan and kind of playground moving and some of the other. There's just a lot of moving parts down there that um I'm sure others can keep to probably a little better.
Well, I, I think there's some confusion, so forty thousand is not for, for specifically for a pickleball. And forty thousand is not enough, so you can't do the pickleball. But also, it's not a new court, is it?
Yes.
Can you clarify that?
Yeah. So um, the the gift is given from the Moral Foundation, gave some letter that you saw, and that starts to leave lower Atkins. We give the amount of forty thousand. They did say pickleball, which is why we're trying to.
But the location, where, what level?
It is on the existing courts. It's, it's.
It's my.
You know, towards refinishing those courts, you're correct, in in committee, we did assess out that it's not a forty thousand dollar project, it's approximately an eighty thousand dollar project. Forty thousand will be covered from here. The remaining forty would come from potentially Parks Conservancy as well as the the pickleballers themselves, the, whatever they're called, the association, potentially raising some funds similar to what we had heard, uh, over at the senior.
Yeah, um, has anyone contacted the Moral Foundation? You are, you're changing the conditions of the gift. The Moral Foundation, I I don't know what their rules are. They have internal rules. I know some of the principals on on the foundation are located in Virginia. Uh, others uh live here in Newburyport. Does anyone know whether or not they have to reconvene to consider this change in the conditions of their gift? And and if it could be possible because of this change, would we blue to forty thousand?
Yeah, I'll do my best. The the primary contact from most has been the Parks Director. Uh, she's, she typically, from what we understand, learned was that during the month of August, members uh on behalf of morals or our morals will come up to the city and spend a month or so in the city learning about kind of the needs are and so forth. They do have a charter that's pretty specific. For example, they they can't spend on maintenance, they have to spend on, uh, utilization, as they call it, which again is subject to some measure of debate. To answer the direct question, um, I have not been in contact with them. The Parks Director was on the call and and understood where the tension was and was gonna go and try and communicate with them. Um, but I don't know the answer to your question. I don't know if they will pull the gift or not.
Sure, I just, I just want to compare with um Counselor Lars. That was my thought too. Um, do we need to get verification through, perhaps the Parks Director, that that they're okay with this, with this change?
No, thank you, Counselor President. Uh, in our discussions, uh, and and this is why it took so much time up in the committee meeting, is that uh pickleball is a specific uh use. And what, in subsequent conversations, what they wanted the uh grant to say was rehabilitation of the multi-use court, which could have basketball and pickleball on it as well. And it didn't come out that way. Uh, but that was the intent. Uh, it's the intent of the Parks Commission, again, in subsequent conversations from our committee meeting, that said um, uh, we're we're trying, in these shared parks, we're trying to create shared use programming venues and expanding the basketball court, which would, has been a priority. Um, renovating it and expanding it to regulation size would allow uh another use of three distinct pickleball courts within that. Um, and so um while we had questioned uh pickleball-only specificity of the quote, uh, it really should have been the other way. So hence the amendment that we had written at the advice of the Parks Director uh with the idea that it would be okay, but we, I have not, we have not read any follow-up that our acceptance of the gift uh allocating and directing it towards a multi-use court uh would be, uh, adjourned.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Wallace?
Is the director on the call, I need to ask?
She is? Oh, she is. Sorry, uh, Director Reed, um, question to you is uh, will the Moral Foundation uh need to approve uh that we're, it'll be for multi-purpose, not just pickleball? Or will they pull the?
Good evening, counselors. I'm sorry, I have not had a chance to speak directly with trustees of the foundation to find out if if the change in wording is an issue. Um, I know that they depend very heavily on the wording that they use in their directive. Um, however, when we when we presented the application, although the word pickleball was in the title of the application, the application for this funding did include a multi-use court, so it presented renovating a basketball court and painting basketball lines and pickleball lines on that court. That was the application that we presented to. and painting basketball lines and pickleball lines on that court. That was the application that we presented to the trustees of the foundation. So again, I do feel because they rely so heavily on the specific wording in their directive that to be absolutely sure, I will have to speak with the trustees to to make sure that they're okay with it. I mean, I I personally believe that they will be fine with that, but I don't think that that's something that you can necessarily take to the bank at this point. I would I would have to confirm that with them.
Hey, Director. Counselor Lane.
Can she answer my question as well in terms of who's liable for injury?
Sure.
Because given the cost of done.
So Director Reed, there's a question earlier. Are we concerned or do we have liability? What is the liability if, you know, a baseball or a softball hits somebody playing basketball or pickleball or whatever on court?
Right. So in general, anyone who is using our parks. Where the owners are protected by the recreational use statute so that. Unless we're charging fees for that use, that which puts us in a whole different category. Then it's unless there's gross negligence, the property owner will not be held liable for any personal harm or damage that's that's incurred. Of course, when we build these courts, any athletic fields, we take precautions and make sure that there are that standard practice is used in terms of any protective netting that would be required. And of course, scheduling, I can't imagine that we would have softball and pickleball happening at the same time. Because not only because of conflicts such as the how Counselor Lane raised, but also just because of the the sheer magnitude of the number of people at the park would not be viable. So. But, yeah, we we take safety precautions into account when we're designing these facilities.
Thank you. Other questions that would aid on the motion? I'll try. If all those are paid or say aye.
Aye.
Any close?
No.
That's it, Mr. President. I I just wanted, I know we're getting late, but I just wanted to thank Council, all the council clubs for serving me. We did a lot of meeting and we just a lot of information, and I just want to say that I appreciate my yields.
Now, there's.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, yes, I motion to collectively approve communication two seventy-three, three twenty-nine, and three fifty.
Second.
Oh, that's received and filed. Oh, sorry. Motion to receive and file.
Second. Hold on. Did they make this made in the package? Remember, in the package. So if the way.
Okay, motion to waive the rule?
Mr. President, they did put in the link whose court's office are lighter, and they have been inserted ever since.
But I, yeah.
Also, they were. So this is.
It probably could see it. All we have to do is.
Okay, all right. So. Do you have a motion for a rule?
Yes.
We did.
Yeah.
I don't see it. Oh, I have an old version. Okay, go ahead. Sorry, practically, Chair.
Does there a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, yeah, so the education committee had sent these three communications as they came about topics, and so I'll really quickly go through each one of them. I I I know it's getting kind of late, but the first one was the Act of nineteen eighty-seven, as we remember, when that came in. And one of the things I was hoping to accomplish, you know, we moved this, I think, in October twenty twenty into education was, I think I was maybe a little ambitious in trying to collectively work with the school committee members, as well as the education committee members, to come up with some type of a memo or something where we could actually present some of the our findings and what are the pros and cons of adopting our municipality. So at the end of the day, we did not get to that level, and we did have a couple of meetings on it, and the next action item was to confer with the city, not city solicitor, but the schools. Administrator, the central office recommended that they have a solicitor that they work with that might have some context. So I would say that at this point, we're comfortable with receiving filing it, and if the matter comes up once again, which it might, then at that point, we can bring in the appropriate solicitor, even from someone with a school's background, as well as the city one, to actually ask questions and do more of a back and forth conversation on the implications of the Act of nineteen eighty-seven. The other one, the communication was regarding the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the the statement of interest that we submitted back in May twenty twenty-one. And at this point, there the next step is when they actually send a group of people to come and look at your project and do a walk through. And that effort did happen, and there is some movement, but not enough yet that we would have to report out or even keep this continuing in education. So instead, what we suspect will happen is the superintendent calendar did say that there will be some possible kind of amendments or some additions based on the conversation. Or probably a new memo or some kind of a new communication to the council. So that's another item where we're feeling that it's fine to go ahead and not, yeah, see and file this one. The last one was in regard to, why am I forgetting that one? That was the communication for this school strategic plan. So as folks know, was that through, and we did this little conversation where we actually did some brainstorming on the seven principles of the strategic plan. This is also something that come next year, that there will be a presentation done for the public. And more information will be done in terms of how they're now mapping some of these goals to the findings of these smaller group discussions that they're doing. And so another one that we thought, okay, there's going to be more information coming forward. No need to keep this continuing, but we'll get information as the next term starts. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. All those favor receiving, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes. Motion to approve collectively application fifty-six and fifty-seven from eleven twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one. Secondhand auto motor vehicle sales for our current court and.
Second. Go ahead.
Motion to approve these. These are, one's had it for twenty-five years, one's had it for twelve, like all both of them. There were no changes. So in the past, in licensing permits for the six years I've been on, I've been through these as renewals and brand of the pool. Came out three to nothing.
Yes.
Yes, motion to evoke rule seven H of the rules to continue ordinance forty-seven. Yeah, four forty-seven of January twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, twenty. The ordinance to license short-term rental units, we can see that over to the next. Counsel.
Second. Go ahead.
This came out three to nothing. Move it over. Just very quick history. Counsel McCollum, Counsel Tonto drafted this based on Boston licensing, Boston's regulations. Counsel Igerman rewrote it. I rewrote Counsel Igerman's. Counsel Igerman then went and rewrote mine. I think we changed back N and A S B R U twice or three times. And then we had a meeting where Counsel Lane, Counselor Tonto, and myself went through it line by line, and we brought it to the city solicitor. And city solicitor made some changes that I redrafted it. Counsel Igerman redrafted it again, and then I made some comments, and Counsel Igerman made some final changes with Counsel McCollum. That's where we sit. There's been a lot of work on it. It's worthy to be renewed next year.
Yeah, I mean, this has been around for, what, three, four years now, and I want to express my appreciation. Counsel McCollum was the one I thought was picking up, and everyone else has done all the way. The Balancing Act, you said from the beginning, we we want to, at least my intent in first offering it, is I I wanted to get some control over short-term rentals in the city, but I didn't want it to be so strict. That someone like my neighbor, who is such a good Airbnb short-term rental person, gets hurt, you know, can fall victim to not being allowed to do it. And I think we're getting close, and I would hope that those of you who continue can bring this forward and get this done. I think it's very important to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. So continue it all.
That is it.
Great.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you, President. I want to invoke under rule seven H, a motion to remove tariff for, rather than issuing too many nine over one oh two.
Second.
My explanation, or? I I don't know that it requires any, really. I will advise the members, however, that the committee on emergency services did not have a chance to be, your recommendations per said. So if either the fellow members of the council, it's occurred to circumstances beyond any other control. If either the council is allowed to express an opinion on that, I'd welcome their input, but I think this is reasonable. The first one has to do with folks driving. Of course, that one is an ongoing project, and I know that the Ward Council has expressed this desire this letter alive, so that we don't forget what's going on. We haven't, and obviously, we're going to have an update on on the status of that project with the neighbors, so we're looking to see that. The second one, on the other hand, is is a little more complex and is is one I think that certainly merits further consideration, that we've just run the clock out on.
So the second part, you understand, but this is a motion to continue to carry over both of those.
Yes. One hundred percent.
Close fix out.
Aye.
Yes, I'd also like to bring out and and move to approve the whole hearing that we began previously about.
Sorry. Second. Go ahead.
As I meant, having spoken with a number of parties, including representatives from National Grid and and the Ward One Counselor, there are some some subtleties to the projects going on down there, again, as in previous cases, our committee has a chance to discuss them in committee, so I welcome their input this time. It it's pretty straightforward, however, despite the objections of of one neighbor, who is probably frustrated, I'm speaking just from personal observation here, frustrated with the destruction to the neighborhood activity with their construction vehicles and the street and the net uses, that sort of thing. It it makes no sense from 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 my perspective, and I'll just speak from my own, to hold up a project and inflict the neighbors to further delay and further inconvenience throughout the winter months. I'm advised that that the National Grid is certainly open to a couple of amendments, but I think your chapter probably would want to explain to you that he has suggested to kind of ease the the anxiety of the neighbors. And I would certainly invite him to explain the amendments he's proposed to this particular.
Thank you, Counsel. Absolutely. Motion to amend the following four conditions. One, that the work not be commenced until after one one twenty-two. Then number two, any disturbances or repairs be completed within fourteen days of the connection to the existing transformer to the new handle. The only exception be seating of any grass which can wait until the weather allows. Number three, that a butters showing the notice, this was a poll hearing, be notified by flyer or phone call at least three days before the commencement of work. And then the access to the driveway at twenty-one Chandel will be restored as quickly as possible, but no more than ten days from the date of the commencement of work. Second. Yeah, so I I don't want to bore you with this project, but unfortunately, it's a bit of a challenge for the neighborhood. The lot is actually located entirely in debris, and so there's actually been multiple years of consternation of it. The most important thing you need to know is I've spoken to both the proponents of the project, one doing the actual construction, and Mr. Butler was here from National Grid and did not express any concern or issues with any of these. Having spoken to several of us and said that none of these would be an issue to to meet, and that they weren't going to be able to do this before January first anyways, so you're not imposing anything. So they can enjoy some holidays and peace. So I ask you for your support on these and get it all wrapped up. Also, favor the motion, I say aye.
Aye.
Any close? On the underlying motion in this session. Roll calls, just franchise.
Right. The motion to approve has amended. Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCollum?
Yes, Counsel Shannon.
Yes.
Counsel Tonto?
Yes.
Counsel Wolker?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Con?
Yes.
Counsel Dutton?
Yes.
Counsel Con?
Yes.
Counsel Roy.
Yes, thank you.
Just to finalize on that, I want to thank my fellow committee members, Counselors Wallace and Counsel McCollum, for their diligence and particularly during the time of COVID, when all of our meetings have been a little bit scrambled in one way or another, and I look forward to seeing their performance in future. Well, Counsel Z could come out.
Yep, you got it. I think I have. Thank you. Go ahead, go. Chair Shannon.
Motion to approve legally orders three, five, six, seven, and four, all related to every.
Second. Hi. Did I ask you to pull through the?
Okay. So three, five, six, and seven.
Second.
Right. So this is all related to parcels A, the water division area, parcel C, the two over station, and Rio seven, the show. We had a meeting last week with the applicant. One of the items that did come up and we were questioning was the HOA questions regarding what we have rights to as far as funding in case they go against what the special buildings and financial were regarding landscaping. What happens is in their HOA documents that all of the holders have to sign, they actually claim more words on their page, we are actually allowed to hold a lien against homeowners association or all the properties if they do go against any of the landscaping. And in each one of the garages, all the properties, they actually have a plaque on the inside that states such that we're not allowed to use these chemicals, et cetera, et cetera. So instead of having the funding in there, we are actually at the city allowed to keep a lien, hold a lien in case they do go against the the landscaping department or the special. So that's that's in the direction that Counsel Z were concerned about starting. On the other item of concern that was brought up was by the ADA, the director, the building director has been in the Mass Department on A A P. And he is working with them on getting the correct, either varishes or getting the job to actually fix the items. So we talked to the director of many development, and this is our director for, who said that that should not go the far taking away on set. That the committee voted three to zero to approve for these three quarters.
Other passwords?
So approval of three oh five, three oh six, and three oh seven. Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCollum?
Yes.
Counsel Shannon?
Yes.
Counsel Tonto?
Yes.
Counsel Wolker? Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Con?
Yes.
Counsel Dutton?
Yes.
Counsel Con?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Right. Motion to approve Rio eight.
Second.
Right. So similar situation, um, if there are amendments of the council, council, or anything like that?
Well, yeah, I will make the, I'm not part of. As far as a completely a burning heat agree that there's no intent to sit in any live room in stormwater five by five ways. So I I'm not suggesting we amend the agreement, but I I did, that's, I'd be discussing committee from the language. Right now, it says that and then further that, so I have another further that. Further that would say, further that, I say you guys will hereby confirms his intent that all responsibility for such stormwater facilities and private ways shall remain the sole responsibility of the rentor and not of the city. A vote. Second. Okay, hold on. I'm sorry. Just on the amendment, I was a favor, you meant to say.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, on the underlying motion in this session, roll call.
Rule has amended order three oh eight. Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCollum?
Yes.
Counsel Shannon?
Yes.
Counsel Tonto?
Yes.
Counsel Wolker?
Counsel Wallace?
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Z?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Dumbone?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Ragan?
Yes.
And, Mr. President, you could send that along.
Motion to approve order forty-six, not for motion to continue to the next council, like what's going to exist.
Well, you may have one, just in case I have that.
Um, so similar situation, a lot of extremely good work was done on this, but to, uh, Councillor, one five and Councillor Larch, uh, we did my bad time. Uh, we did have some amendments in our committee on Thursday night, I believe they did get into the package, but we did get, over the weekend, there was additional warnings and take law. There is a comment at the very end of the order, we're going to include another that statement, and I have given the amendment to, uh, Clerk John already, but I am offering the amendment that will change the last that in the document to that to allow adequate time for dwelling units to be brought into compliance, short-term dwelling units, STRU. Special permit shall not be required or not exempt as we are due June first, twenty twenty-two. This is mainly to say that once we do approve this, we will, uh, we will prove it when we actually vote on it next term, but we will not be enforcing it until June first, twenty twenty-two.
Very special. Yeah. Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering why you took a, pick a date specific rather than just say six months after passing? What's the reason?
Um, we want to actually have folks who are aware that Airbnb is coming for the Louisiana joint hearing next session to know that this is the date that we'll start in four seasons. That was the reason we got that to take law as well.
Yeah, I mean, my concern would be one of the things that comes next year until May to pass it, then, then you don't have, you're gonna have to change that up. So, thank you, Professor President. Um, the date coincides with the date of the approval of licensing permit, so if that date changed, then this would change as well. And we tried to push that out as to a future date that we think is manageable. Uh, and maybe if we don't get this done in the first, uh, few weeks, uh, we'll have to push that date out again. And so, um, uh, we chose to have the dates coincide, that, that's okay.
Other, other comments? Okay, so the underlying, uh, motion to carry over the amendment's tariffs, right?
I don't.
No, we didn't go to the. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. Okay, so that, that pass. Now, the underlying motion carried over the next year, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, so there. Thank you. Anything else?
Just one thing, Councilor President, um, we did agree to receive a file communication three forty-six, but I did want to bring up that during the second session tonight, we did agree that the D work that was done by attorney random should be made public, so I will be adding that to the meeting minutes, whatever we posted online, so everyone has access to this. And then, uh, maybe the next council can bring it up next year and discuss further options there. And we'll make sure that it does get to, uh, all of the department heads who will compete in this. So that was also the last meeting of the week.
So the motion is to receive and file the communication, Councillor McCollum?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that if I can, adding, uh, communication two forty-six from Public Safety onto that same, uh, receiving file. Just, just I mean.
Well, well, then just die, actually.
Okay.
Just die.
Together.
I don't worry about that. Uh, anything else? Uh, all those in favor of receiving and filing, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Uh, thank you, Chair.
And I think you and Council Wallace for the last few years have sent funds to the community.
Thank you very much.
Public Safety. Thank you, Councillor President, uh, I motion to approve order three ten holiday parking. So, um, this is our, uh, traditional offer to, uh, uh, our visitors that we will offer, uh, parking, um, during the holiday free assignments. Thank you for, uh, welcome free parking from the, uh, the residents of.
There, there's a second, uh?
Yes.
Yes, okay, any heard for the sessions? All those in favor, say aye. Close, that's enough.
Great, uh, uh, motion to approve application fifty-five, cultural survival bizarre. Uh, thank you, uh, this is on In Street, it's scheduled for July, uh, and asked for the time to read longer read time to be able to get, uh, uh, notifications out. Uh, they missed it last year, uh, this is because of it, your application's complete, uh, it's gonna be on In Street from, uh, ten to eight. Uh, the only, uh, pickup is that they weren't aware that we now have outdoor dining and that they have to, uh, readjust some of their booth locations along, uh, In Street. But, uh, nothing was really thrown anyway, they were just general areas, uh, blocked out. So, uh, that will be a follow-up to them, uh, for weeks, sixty-eight beforehand, they'll, uh, uh, bring something to the court's office, uh, uh, for his. Yeah, just a little bit of, uh, addition to that I make to the chair. Um, I brought up the notion of concern by brick and mortar, uh, retailers, uh, not only with this particular event, the Yankee Homecoming, et cetera, et cetera. And a wonderful response from Lois, Lois, uh, Hager, uh, understands the concerns of the brick and mortar, how they deal with bizarres and so on, so forth. So that's on the table, it's been discussed, you're very sensitive to it, and I just wanted to let you know that that was put out there.
Thank you for, uh, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Uh, what, uh, motion to approve order three oh two? Second. Uh, it's a stop sign at the intersection of Rossin and, uh, Island Avenue. We've had, we've had some, uh, uh, I, I don't want to say complaints, we've had some comments and observations, uh, from, uh, residents there that, uh, folks were coming up, uh, Highland, uh, Rossin Ave, and where it's Highland just before the hospital, uh, there's a do not enter sign that, you know, they're one way and it just bore right through the intersection. Uh, we had, uh, T-SAC, uh, review this, we had the city engineer out there, we had, uh, the hospital, uh, facilities manager out there. And while we were there, somebody blew through the street and everyone knew exactly where the stop sign should go. So, uh, then what they're doing is taking down one of the two do not enter signs, putting up a stop sign, uh, or one of them drawing a line across that, and they think that will at least alleviate some of the traffic for, uh, going forward. Uh, ideally, we'd like to put a stop sign on the other side of the hospital, but, uh, we think this is gonna handle the majority of, of the, uh, complaints. Thank you.
Other councillors? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, is it? No, this is a board, yeah.
Uh, now, motion to receive the file of communication three eighty, uh, it's a letter regarding the incident on Perry Road. Second. Uh, you, you know, there was a, a dog ran out of the park, uh, was killed, we talked about putting a fence up, uh, as we, uh, as we investigated this committee, we realized this was a bigger issue, involved parks, involved water, uh, involved potentially the steps in the dog park. Uh, so the plan was to re- to receive and file this with the intent that, uh, something larger would be reintroduced by the way council is about.
Other pastors? All those in favor of receiving and filing, say aye.
Aye. Oh, thank you very much.
There, Congress, all the utilities?
Uh, nothing has come out, uh, this evening, so, um, to measure the there that I put in, to, shall die if it was not now.
Uh, Chair, uh?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I beg forgiveness and beg, uh, that you weigh the rules and allow me to both bring out, um, order two thirty-nine and at the same time move it over to the next session. Thank you.
Okay, in session? Which one?
Two thirty-nine.
Are these in the packet?
I know, that's one, because it said, you let me bring it out, I didn't move it over to the next session.
I see, okay. Uh, what are they got?
Uh, well, the council rule seven and ten B, discussion on council seven and ten B put in by Councillor, uh, Con, and it's purely my slip that I didn't get it in.
No, no, what, what's off there?
Oh. Yeah, that, that they do need to bring up, and I'm sorry, I thought it would be just.
I.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, um, yeah, so I actually introduced this in February of this year and into the Rules Committee, and we have been so busy that I don't think they've had a chance to talk about it, but the, the two rules, seven B, and I believe it's, um, eleven ten. So one relates to, um, specifying, uh, for the council president, uh, in terms of sending committees and that, sending that at the inaugural meeting. So that's a, one of the, the first kind of, uh, edit or kind of language to discuss in the Rules Committee. The second one is about debates and, um, the way we can do debate and actually limit debates so that, you know, we've talked about maybe making our meetings more effective and impactful. And that was one of the things I want to also have a conversation in the Rules Committee about, I think, in that tick.
Goodness, sir. Wait, uh, so to their superiority, a motion to waive rules, uh, that's on the packet, bring it up tonight and send it over to the next session under seven H. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That's, that's all.
Thank you, nothing else.
Thank you. Okay, we're good to your, uh, uh, more than good to your, we talked about this last meeting, it was second. Work Councillors, it's their last meeting. So, uh, I'd like to indulge them if they want to, you know, say the words, it says, Councillor. We're almost it, uh, when you left. Good morning, seniority, and I, um, the council panel has been on a great team here, so we deserve to go first and get a sign. Well, Councillor Con?
Sure, thank you, um. Difficult task, it says, first to the last, and last to the front. And yeah, this is, uh, an interesting evening, but there are some folks that I would like, um, uh, to recognize and thank. As I walk out the door and, uh, let me assure you, uh, you, you heard earlier that my, my mother died at age one hundred and two. My dad died in ninety-four. So, if it's in the genes, I'm gonna be a candy ass for years again. I don't want to come this here, but, uh, let me, let me, actually, a little more serious, there's some people I want to thank. First, the voters in this community. One of the mysteries of elected offices that you never really know who voted for you or why. I scratched my head over that, uh, in the past, but I, I do want to thank the people of the city for, um, offering me this opportunity nine times. I, I hope I haven't disappointed them. Um, for the most part, it's been an honor and usually a pleasure, as you know, that always. Um, but I do thank them, it's, uh, there is no way for any of us to get to know so much about the city that we love. Um, and other than serving on this council, and to those people who are not watching, but might hear about it later, if ever you've had the thought. Run, the worst thing that can happen is you lose and you find another way of spending time. Um, I, I also, I can't thank you without thanking my family. Um, boy, they put up with a lot, uh, and in particular, I don't know how your families work, but, but I do the cooking in my house. And, and I meant that there were one nights when I ran out the door and slapped them together, and so, I'm sorry, I have two skinny kids, that's the reason. I thank them, they, they indulge my passion, um, and I, I think it's actually been enriching for them in, in different ways. Yeah, when they're adolescents, they're a little bit, um, uneasy at times, but in most part, um, uh, I think it was worthwhile. One of my daughters managed the college, was politics, I know her. Um, I also want to thank all the city employees, and again, we don't thank them enough. Yeah, I know you're a patriot. They also take a lot of abuse from people at different times, but most of our people are thankful for what they do. And, and the mayors, um, with whom I serve. It, it's remarkable, uh, that we take so little time to thank them for what they do, whether they arrive in the dead of night to put out a fire or to, or for the police show up to, uh, separate, uh, peeling neighbors or, uh, domestic dissmuch, which is most of them, that's involved what they're doing, they're not their major crimes to solve, but they do an awful lot to make this a more civilized place. And I cannot tell you the number of times that a pipe has broken in the dead of night, in the coldest winter evening, uh, of the year. And those folks are down in that pit fixing a pipe, stopping a leak, uh, cars whizzing by on the street, uh, to make this a better place in which we live and work and raise our families and, and, and enjoy one of those times. And, uh, finally, I went back, as I heard Councillor Earl said, and, and looked at the tryst of them, there are none of other councillors that I've had the pleasure of serving with, and I hadn't stopped, like, because I ran out of fingers and thumbs, you know, it was, it was so far. But the, the point I want to make is that every person, every single person, including the six others who were elected. When I first came onto this council, it was seven people, all of us, that was a kind of throw up upon you. Um, came in with the idea that, that there will be something positive for this community. And that, that we all have the same vision for where it's gonna go. But it has indeed been an honor to serve with you and, uh, and a pleasure to serve with you. And, um, with that in mind, I, uh, uh, just say, see you later, happy trails, and, uh, move your arm, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, the, the Etlott Club, I stole my thunder. Um, you know, in nineteen eighty-six, Ronald Reagan said, uh, the scariest nine words in the English language, uh, I'm from the government and I'm here to help you. And I think, uh, although there were libertarian tendencies before then, uh, at least from the New Deal, uh, to the Reagan administration, there was a sense, uh, that, uh, government was indeed there to help you, that has changed. Uh, I ran eight years ago, um, in the diluted hope that maybe I could help change, uh, that impression that people have. Uh, and, and like Councillor Con, uh, I have been impressed with the city employees across all departments, not just Public Safety, Fire, Police, DMTs, and, 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 you know, emergency services, HABMA, all right, but, uh, Finance Department, Assessors Office, Treasurer's Office, Building Department, Planning Department, from the directors all the way down. I want the people in the city to know that these people are, might, I've had close relations with them, and they are committed and they are dedicated to making your life easier, and I respect that, and that's all I want to say, thank you. Very good, first. Okay. Sure, you all want to give them? Right, uh, I'll be very grateful, because I'm the least, I feel like they were the edited stepchild literally, I think, really. Uh, over our six years, that's the most I could give, and my family could give, uh, Councillor Con touched on it. It is a burden, we all know that for our family, I've got three young kids, I've got a job that I go to night meetings for, so it, it's been difficult, but, uh, it's been very enjoyable. I will say, every single one of you, very, very happy to have gotten to know you and meet you and work with you. You're all smart, intelligent, motivated people, you don't always agree, but I think what we have in common is that we love the city. We have a civic obligation to, to do good, as Councillor Panter is saying, or, or to do something, and that's, that's rare amongst people. We are part of a special group of people, and, uh, we should, we should reflect on that and applaud ourselves. Uh, I'd also like to thank, uh, Mayor Holliday, uh, she has done a lot of good things, told them our la- our last meeting together in January. We, everybody who gets to read the budget from now on, you know, we should, should reflect upon the fact that she's made that a much more cohesive, readable document so that we can pick out where all of the toilet paper fund is going and make sure that that doesn't get overspent. Um, and I would say one last thing to, uh, the same city workers, I actually said it to come up to.
Um, and, and I would say one last thing to, uh, the same city workers, I actually said it to Count, uh, to Building Inspector Earl, it's hard, they come in here and you want to be like, hey, how's it going, but we're, 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 you know, at least I felt that I was overseeing them, and that would be appropriate for the public to see, so, you know, we don't always be, tell them how good of a job they do, and they definitely do, and, and I've just met some really interesting character, characters, but also finally, for the, the residents, I never would have met so many of these people, and it's just, it's, it's made my view of the city even, even better than my local reporting, so, thank you.
I'm very grateful, so I have, I have years, uh, a lot of work, and I'm, I think, we've heard from several counselors, we're proud of that, and we, uh, you know, I still appreciate our coworkers, you know, so, whether you think about it now or not, you know, we are part of a small group that work in City Hall, whether we're elected, like Mayor Holiday, or we're appointed, or we're just employees, you know, uh, you know, we're, we're carrying a lot of the whole city, and no one would have done more, it's, you know, we can sign up for it, so we're glad to do it, but, you know, that is a bond between us and City Hall, employees, uh, counselors, um, kind of like in a family, if I don't take your brothers and sisters, and feel like them all, but it's, you know, we are together, and I'm proud of that, I'm glad we did accomplish things, and, uh, grateful for the time, and, um, I think the speaker and the outset of tonight's political conference, Brad, and all's, no one's gonna remember us, but we're gonna remember us. Um, you know, when I die, uh, we'll have some, some of life, and we all better remember, I'll remember, but also, you know, it's kind of, put it, you know, in the best of time. So, that's it, thank you very much, and I'll take a moment to leave there.
Thank you.